I'll call the Board of Selectmen together and into business here on six twenty one sixteen. Caitlin tells me the bells have ringed for seven o'clock, so it must be time. Let's start off with Selectmen's Liaison Reports. Mr. Arena.
Nothing to report. I was witness to the accident last night and a great job that spreading fire and police did in negotiating traffic from all directions with not a lot of warning. So that's a tough, that's a tough intersection with folks coming down twenty eight and driving business on Pearl Street and April Street. But everything looked like it was well managed. So thank you Chief and thank you to the teams and thank you Chief Burns. I know you're not here tonight, but we're all well represented.
All right. Never a dull moment, huh Chief?
Yeah, not since January first.
Full moon came up last night?
Can't catch a break, yeah.
How many miles on the roof did he get?
Is there, is there a parade award to him?
Yeah. And Kevin?
The only report I have is from the latest community listening session, both myself, Dan Engler and Barry Berman were there in attendance. It was a good, good crowd. I would say probably our largest crowd.
Yeah.
Not by much, but it was a, it was a pretty good sized crowd. I don't know what the numbers were, but yeah, a lot of new faces. You know, I, I think Bob had a little bit different spin, basically the same presentation, but a little bit different spin on it. I, I think that actually led to less questions because we had, we did have a lot of new faces there. I think it was a little, you know, people kind of, their questions were answered before they got into the Q and A portion of the night.
Yep.
So, you know, other than, other than, you know, the, the good attendance and good presentation, that's about all I have to report.
Barry.
Likewise. Okay.
Ditto.
Wow, that was pretty easy, huh?
I, you know, I wasn't present, but I saw that, you know, Bob shared the presentation with me and, you know, I, I think it's done what it's supposed to each time.
When you have a listening session and then what happens is you listen, what a concept that is, and then make the adjustments to the things that people seem to be most interested in. So it sounds like we're getting to that place that people are getting the, you know, we're hearing from them and they're getting the kind of information they need. Any public comment this evening? Yes? All you have to do is identify yourself and where you live.
I'm Brian O'Meara, twelve Batch Elder Road.
Yep.
And frankly, I'm here to voice my concerns tonight about the cemetery garage project that's being considered by the Permanent Building Committee. Yes, my property abuts Wood End Cemetery, which as I understand it is the prime site location for that project, but it's not even my primary concern. My primary concern is frankly, as a taxpayer in an environment where we are reducing headcount in schools, we're reducing town services, but we're still considering a project, one point five to three million dollars in order to house three trucks, five lawn mowers and a backup. Then even in spite of all the great work Mr. Lasher's done, that Dr. Dory has done, we haven't passed a level service school budget in three years. We can't pass a level service town budget. I think we've all heard, we've been told the grim situation, the financial situation of town, so I think everybody is expecting an override to be on the ballot for fall. But in spite of all that, we're still considering potentially a three million dollar spend to house a handful of pieces of equipment that frankly are DPW equipment that performs DPW services. And as I see it frankly, belongs at the DPW. It all has to go there to be fueled and contained as it is. I also know that, frankly, I'm not, I, I know the current building is beyond its usefulness. I'm not questioning the problem, I'm simply questioning the solution. I know that ultimately there's another larger overall DPW project potentially in the works here down the road, and I know that takes time. But I don't understand why this equipment, this project would not be part of that overall DPW solution. And again, especially in an environment where we're cutting teachers, we're cutting town services, frankly, I just don't see how this makes sense. I've been to the building committee meetings, I've spoken with several of the cemetery board trustees. I'm well aware that we're very early in the process. I know that there is not a project per se. But I also know that the bids for project owner have come in, and I know this project is gaining momentum and it's rolling along. And frankly, I didn't want to wait until the fall when there would be public hearings and everybody has an opportunity to comment to really voice my concerns. And again, this is as a taxpayer, not just as an abutter.
True.
Believe me, all the abutters are very concerned, but I have spoken with taxpayers from precinct five, precinct eight, precinct two that really are beside themselves to hear that this is a project being considered when all these other things are on the table to be cut. So I just don't see how a town of twenty-five thousand residents would require multiple DPW facilities, particularly one in a residential area right within yards of, of people's properties. So I know you have a packed agenda tonight and I wanted to be brief, I'll let you get back to your business, but again, I just did not want to go into the fall without voicing my concerns. I would fully expect that you'll probably hear those same concerns from other taxpayers throughout the summer because, you know, they, they're, they're sentiment that goes on, so I just appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, you're doing pretty good at doing this. That's the first time you did it. This is exactly the time and place for that. We welcome your comments and, and others. So thank you very much. Yes?
Larry Gilson, seventy Pearl Street, and you're going to be reviewing the extension of the parking van at, on the east side of Longwood. It's on the east side of Longwood, from a hundred feet to two hundred and eighty-five feet. And I would like to voice my objection to that. I'm, I'm, I have an objection to the van, but I know that's not on the agenda tonight. So what I would like to do is discuss some of the problems that at least I have, like some of the other residents aren't here, but I've discussed with some of the other residents too. Part of, I understand this is a difficult problem because you have a narrowing of the street and I, I see this every time that La Piere or Longwood has, has a function or if there's games across the street, which I really would like to see the kids continue to have their, their games across the street. So it's, it's not really the, the traffic in general that's caused by this, but what happens to the residents is that people do park up on the sidewalk, which I believe is part of the objective to this. And what that does is that totally obscures our ability to back out in what I would consider a safe manner into the street because we can't see when cars are lined, even if, if the crest going southbound on the street, we can't see because of the block.
Larry, can I just ask you?
Yeah.
Public comment is always welcome. That, this actually is on our agenda tonight?
Yeah, the, the two eighty-five, but not the parking van itself. I mean, I, I would like to go as far as to lift the parking van and place the cars on the other side of the street. But what's on your agenda is the extension from a hundred to two hundred and eighty-five feet, is that right?
Yeah, uh, yes, that is correct.
Correct. You certainly have that discussion.
I'm, I'm kind of using this as a platform to, to go a little bit farther, but I, I wouldn't like to limit the parking van to where it is now because it does impose a burden to the, to the residents. Now even along that stretch there on the, you can't get my direction up here, but on the west side where, where residents are, as people park up on the burn, it actually deteriorates the burn. So what we see along most of that area right now is a deterioration where the earth is actually below, below the, the, the road. And so what that causes, it causes puddling, it causes fracking in the road. For us, it's a safety concern to back out. The kids on the other side of the street try and cross the street. It tends to be a, a busy area where we have trucks and, and other cars because it's, it's been a, a main throughway for a while. So I'm here kind of voicing my concern and objection to the extension of the van, making it known that I, I object to the van entirely.
Okay. And I would welcome you to stick around for that portion of the discussion.
Yeah.
I think you'd add to that as well. So thank you for your comments, Larry. Yes, sir?
William Dalton, ninety-one Pearl Street.
Yep.
Pressing the same.
Okay, so, yeah, I, we're gonna-
Very quickly, this goes back to nineteen ninety-three. I also support the chief and the new parking regulations. I have documentation approved and I will present the case when I get it.
Good. We're gonna be getting to that in the agenda shortly, so welcome your comments. Any other comments from the public? On something not other, otherwise on our agenda here? Okay, Bob?
I feel obliged to answer Brian's points and to give a little background. I guess the first thing I should say that the theory is the way we budget in the town, and this is always subject to change. Any kind of a debt or capital project, they're really the same, one's just a way to pay for it, is isolated as five percent of the budget. So when you don't do a project such as the Birch Metal Lighting or if the cemetery garage gets canceled, another capital project moves in its place. So under the way we currently do it, you don't save any jobs that way. Now for the last two years, the Finance Committee has relaxed the five percent because of the budget situation to four and three quarters. So they could always come up with any new policy they want. So as a practical matter, you know, you could be right that it could save jobs, but I did want to point out that the way we're set up, that just means another capital project would step in. Just to give a real brief history, when I, when this article came up as a petitioned article at town meeting from one of the cemetery trustees, I spoke out very much against it and I objected to it because I didn't believe adequate study had been done. And I discussed the desire to have a single DPW garage in the future to accommodate this. The reason however that it is, it is now a project in front of the Permanent Building Committee is it was an instructional meeting passed by town, or motion passed by town meeting. So they asked us to do that.
Right.
The Permanent Building Committee is newly formed in the fall. This is their first project. I guarantee you, they have a lot of opinions on their process, and I'll tell you, one of them is they think it's inappropriate for cemetery trustees as an example to be part of their committee until there is a project. So that's one of the complaints I've got that you'll see as a potential change to a bylaw next November. So they also feel like they needed to be more independent, but I explained to them, okay, that's fine for the future, but again, an instructional motion put these people in front of you.
Yep.
Just to explain what we're doing, town meeting appropriated two hundred thousand in the current year for the process. Because of interesting mass procurement laws, we had to secure an owner's project manager for a very small project. And that's the RFP that is being evaluated right now for the, by the committee. I don't know, since no bids were put in, we'll have to negotiate a fee, but our full expectation is fifty thousand or less will cover that cost. When I stood in front of town meeting in April and I explained that, I asked for a hundred and fifty of the two hundred to be moved into the next year to hire an architect to design it. So you have a project manager, then you'll have an architect that'll look at the two cemeteries that have been selected, look at probably more than one site in each cemetery, and have some back and forth with the committee and the abutters, I know they've been in a couple times, and come up with some final suggestions. And that is expected to cost up, up to a hundred and fifty thousand. So it certainly is debatable as to whether that should go forward, but that's town meeting as well. But under no circumstances would I recommend anything further go on after that work stops. And I don't think you're gonna see the architect nearly ready for November town meeting or even April. He's got six months' work to do probably. But if the architect were ready for, let's say, annual town meeting, I would stand up and say, I do not recommend any building project until we sort out the long-term situation of the DPW garage. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to your point, but I'm just not sure if we shouldn't spend any money to develop a real good cost estimate and an alternative that we may need down the road. One of the criticisms of projects, you know, that Barry certainly brought up on FinCom is the lack of good work up front and alternatives being presented to the community. So, you know, there's one library, it was only one location and it had one design. So if this does go forward and upwards of two hundred thousand is spent, at least you'll have, if not Plan A, Plan B for a cemetery garage in a cemetery. So I don't philosophically object to that. I just wanted to sort of give you that as background. But I, I certainly take your point.
Yeah. And I would say that not a dissimilar situation recently occurred that you might have read in the paper or heard about, and that is that there was a capital project, and I think it's important, Bob points out, there are capital projects and there are, there's the operating budget. And they really don't collide necessarily. However, your point is certainly well taken. When there's such dramatic concerns about our operating budget and the ability to be able to fund it, the idea that we'd be spending a large amount of money on almost anything until it's vetted as to exactly how our budget is going to be corrected is a point well taken. And to that point, there was a capital project that was designed around the expansion of recreational opportunities over at Birch Metal. Now, that, that came in at a forty percent increase over, you know, what the expectation was. And after a disappointing due process, we had to say that town meeting had said to us, light five fields. So in order to do that, it would cause a forty percent increase in cost or a reduction of two fields. And that wasn't the right thing to do for all, I think really Brian, for all the reasons that you're bringing up. So I, I know that those of us on the Board of Selectmen are looking very hard at all of these things and, you know, your point is certainly well taken. To Bob's point, you know, one of the things that happened in that lighting project, for example, was that a hundred thousand dollars was spent. Now that hundred thousand dollars was spent in order to understand the geology of, at some point in the future, you know, the hope would be that that expanded lighting would go on, you know, when times are better, the bidding process works itself out the way that we need it to. And occasionally, whether it's examining alternatives around the cemetery building and spending some money, not the big money necessarily, or, you know, in the case of the Birch Metal project, a hundred thousand was spent, but the money is not lost. The work is done. The geology is not going to change, you know, so these are things that, and I'm, I'm guessing, Brian, you might have been at one of the listening sessions, these are things that we're trying to clarify so that people do understand about capital projects versus operating budget, money spent that helps you better understand whether to go forward and how to go forward if you do. So these public comments are very valuable and timely and thoughtful, so I would thank you for that. Bob, was there something else?
Yeah, if you don't mind. On Sunday, I thanked the police chief and the superintendent and myself. We all decided it was a, a good choice to give up some Father's Day time and go to the congregational church for a community meeting.
Yes.
And that was, it was really interesting. It wasn't a high turnout, as you'd expect really on that day. It was a very diverse turnout. There was a lot of different opinions in the room. There was forty or fifty people there. I'm just discussing what had happened in Orlando and, you know, some of the implications. And, you know, I was in a really interesting working group that included ministers and a couple of other people. And it was kind of the management level discussion of religion. I found that pretty interesting because they're running organizations and, you know, we're running organizations. We had a lot in common, as it turned out. They're having a lot of the same issues we are with, you know, Gen X, as it were, getting their attention and keeping their attention. So it, it was pretty interesting. And I just mostly wanted to thank the chief and the superintendent, you know, for taking time out that day. It was, it was really appreciated. And lastly, just at the end of today, we did get in a new proposal for the Train Depot forty B. It is much improved. It'll need to be certainly vetted by staff, but they have cut one floor off the top, down the floor. They have pulled back all the setbacks.
Excellent.
Mostly the three biggest pullbacks are from the front and the sides, not the rear, but there is a pullback from the rear. And they've reduced the unit count. I, I don't think they mentioned parking. Did you see anything on parking?
I didn't.
Okay. So I just wanted to let you know that some progress is being made. And is the next meeting this Thursday?
I think so.
Yeah, Thursday at seven at the Pleasant Street Center, right?
Okay. So I just wanted to let the board know that. That's all.
I, I do think it's, first of all, it was exciting to see those changes that came in hot off the presses this afternoon. And I do think it's important for people to realize that, you know, all the people, all the, the people to my left and my right have worked hard on a lot of different projects. One of them is this one. I know Kevin Sexton has put an enormous amount of time into connecting parties so that things could maybe progress in a little different way and, and truly create something that instead of, you know, the entire town being at odds, now suddenly there's a more workable project. I want to thank you Kevin for your hard work in that regard and the urgings of your friends to your left and your right, you know, in that, in that regard.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, I don't think we have any proclamations, do we?
No.
No? Good. Okay, so-
I hope not.
Report to the VASC, Dan.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the volunteer appointment, Subcommittee met again this evening. We had two principal items of discussion. One, the need to revoke the terms on all the associate members. Upon a closer reading of the bylaw, those terms needed to be two years, not one. Some were previously recommended to you and then voted by you as one year. But you're all supposed to arrange it so an equal number expire each year, so we are recommending a mix of one and two for some boards and two for others. So I'll be proposing motions for reconsidering our previous vote on that and then the terms. We also had, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. We have three offices, which were not voted on because people did not show up. We still have not seen either candidate for constable, so we're not putting either candidate's name in nomination this evening.
Okay.
And the CPDC associate was unable to make it, so we'll, we'll vote that at a certain point. Neither, I believe, are, are critical.
So we're gonna pass on both of those?
We'll pass on those. We did interview both incumbents on the cons comm. Both came in this evening, Jamie Maum and Anika Scanlon. We thanked them for doing that. Previously, on the seventh, we interviewed Dave Penet. So we have three candidates going for two spots. Mr. Maum volunteered to step back and become an associate member in view of the, the new applicant, which I thought was a generous offer on his part. So that, that'll be for your consideration this evening. We'll, we'll put motions up for that. So shall I begin or are there any questions?
Okay. Any questions from?
Why don't we do the, let's do the associates first. That's partway down the page here. Move the Board of Selectmen reconsider the previous associate member votes. That should cover it.
Yeah.
Check. All, any discussion?
You don't have to read them, do you?
No.
Got a vote on this first.
All those in favor?
I'll read them.
Okay, so that vacates our, our previous nomination.
Does it vacate or does it simply open a question?
No, it vacates. It, it, it's like we never, we never passed anything. It just takes, takes the motion away.
RCTV is deleting it right now.
All right. So to put them back, move the Board of Selectmen to accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee, Subcommittee I guess, for the Associate Members as follows. Animal Control Joyce Gould, and these are all, unless I mention it, their terms ending six thirty eighteen. So I won't read all the ones that are six thirty eighteen. Animal Control Joyce Gould, Board of Health Nancy Doctor. On the Advisory Committee Jeffrey Everson for a term ending six thirty seventeen. Gina Snyder, term ending six thirty eighteen. Commissioner of Trust Funds Richard Holmes, Council on Aging Pooja Parsons. Fall Street Fair Committee Allison Olman, Historic District Jack Williams. Historical Commission Virginia Adams. And for Recreation Committee, we, we can have three associates here. We vacated the previous vote. We're recommending Mary Ellen Stalecki for an associate term ending six thirty eighteen and Catherine Camener for a term ending six thirty eighteen. And Gil Congdon for a term ending six thirty seventeen. On the Town Forest Committee, we can have three, as it turned out, so I will put all three back into nomination. Michael Bork, term ending six thirty eighteen. Daniel Ford, term ending six thirty eighteen. Nancy Doctor, term ending six thirty seventeen. And finally, for Trails Committee Associate John Parsons for a term ending six thirty eighteen.
Second?
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's do, we're gonna skip Constable and CPDC Associate. I'm gonna place the following, let me give you a report of the vote of the VASC. We put all three names into nomination for the full membership. Jamie Maum received one vote. David Penet received one vote. Anika Scanlon received two votes. So it will be up to the board to decide which of those two gets the vote.
And are these for the two?
Well, we'll do, we'll do the full membership first and then we will vote, put into nomination anyone who did not succeed by vote of the board.
Okay.
For associate and then the board can act as it sees fit. So, makes sense?
Got it.
So I'm gonna put into nomination for full membership on the Conservation Commission for terms ending six thirty nineteen. These are full three-year terms. Jamie Maum, David Penet, and Anika Scanlon, and everybody will get two votes here. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Jamie Maum. David Penet. Anika Scanlon. Okay. Did you call the vote, what was the vote on Penet? Four?
Four.
Okay.
For Anika.
Okay, five. So David and Anika are elected. I'll put the name of Jamie Maum into nomination for an associate membership on the Conservation Commission for a term ending six thirty eighteen. Is there a second?
Did the VASC take a position on that?
We, we did not.
Take a conclusive position?
I'm just putting it out there for the board to vote if it so chooses.
How many associate memberships are open?
They can have up to four because they're a committee of seven.
And actually, that was one of the discussions that we had in terms of kind of, you know, what's your needs list going forward. They struggled with quorum. It's a pretty time-intensive committee, as we all know. There'd be people who were doing it for a long time. There's a sense of burnout. So there was a general consensus that developing a deep bench is something that should be a priority, both of the committee and of the Board of Selectmen going forward to sort of start thinking about recruiting people to replace those who've been doing it for a while and, and who at some point maybe want to step down. So we also discussed sort of skill sets, you know, what, you know, kind of if you had to build the committee from scratch, what are you missing? So we had discussion on that. So it was a pretty good-
Yeah, two incumbents contributed materially to that, I thought.
How many associates are there present?
Zero.
None. None. Jamie is the senior fellow there. Like, he's been on and off of that, I think, that his last term began in two thousand and ten, I think. So he's, he's been there. This'll be his sixth year.
Yeah, and he's, he specifically stated he wanted to actually stay involved, but as an associate, wanting to get new people in.
That's the pleasure of the Board, is to, is to, we rank conclusive as to who we recommended.
So I, I guess I'm confused. If that's the position he asked for, I wonder why his name was put in as a full membership?
Because we didn't know it till he showed up.
Oh. So that happened after the interviews?
Well, I mean, in fairness to all, I thought I put all the names in.
Okay.
So the board might have a different view.
Uh, how many members that, that makes, makes that up?
Seven, seven full.
And-
And they may have up to four associates under the bylaw.
They may have up to four associates. Okay.
So do you want me to remake that motion, Mr. Chairman, or?
Well, I think you've made the motion that you've, you've nom- I think you've nominated-
Jamie Maum.
Jamie Maum.
Right now, he's the only candidate for associate.
As an associate member.
For a two-year term. I don't know if you got a second on that or not?
I do not have a second.
Second.
A second. Discussion. Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Two votes.
All those opposed?
Motion does not carry.
Okay.
That concludes the business under appointments.
Okay, so, um, I believe it's hearing time. Is that right, Bob?
Yep.
Yep. This is the, for the approval of the FY seventeen non-union classification and compensation plans.
Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on June twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass, to approve, oh, on the following, approve FY seventeen non-union classification compensation plan seven dash twenty, increase the-
No, not yet.
That's it.
Well, you're reasonable.
We gotta let Judy tell us about it first.
There really are very many changes this year. It's just a couple of items that I think are, are still vacant.
Point of order, the secretary did not read the full notice, just so we don't get in any trouble here.
Oh.
Pick it up at a copy of-
Oh, a copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the Town Manager's Office, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass, Thursday, seven thirty to five thirty PM, Tuesday, seven thirty to seven PM, and attached to the hearing notice on the website, www.ReddingMass.gov. You know the rest.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I think we're rolling now.
Yes.
Are you issuing special glasses to read that? Because my old eyes can't, I have no idea. I know there's something lit up up there, but that's about it.
Well, there's really no changes to this particular schedule. It's the same that you voted on in the spring. There you go. Um, there are some positions here that are currently vacant, but there's really no changes to this particular schedule. The next schedule, which is the K in class or the classification for the compensation, that is inclusive of a two percent COLA that was voted on by town meeting, and the graphs are as such.
Okay. Okay.
I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Three fulls there. It's moving.
So what's on anybody's mind? We've got Judy in the hot seat.
Yeah, exactly.
Been there before.
Yeah. This seems like it's just a very straightforward, you know, move year over year.
Yeah, former Lawrence City Councilor, sorry.
Lawrence City Councilor, so.
So I've been on the hot seat.
What's that? Oh, yeah, that's right. She's a Lawrence City Councilor in her other life.
My other life, yes. Long ago.
Yeah, well, we're very calm compared to those guys, I'll tell you that.
Oh, yeah.
I think so. So, any other thoughts or questions? Bob, any comments from you? We good? Any public comment?
One quick question. Bob, is there any of this increased due to the step up to full-time? There were a couple of positions that were going to thirty-seven and a half.
That wouldn't reflect the change in either of your classifications. It might require more money in a budget, but it's the same basic outline. If you look at this second picture here, what you actually approve is an hourly wage, and then for the convenience of payroll, we provide a thirty-seven and a half and a forty-hour wage.
It's just a wage.
Yeah, so it's all right.
Yeah.
Any public comment? I think our next move is to close the hearing.
Move the Board of Selectmen close the hearing on the approval of the FY seventeen non-union classification and compensation plan.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Five, zero.
Five, zero.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the FY seventeen non-union classification and compensation plan as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Five, zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
She said that was an hour shorter than Lawrence would have been.
We'll try to do better next year.
No, you don't have any of this. You can do whatever you want.
Okay, Sharon, you're on.
I just wanted to start by thanking all of you for the beautiful flowers you sent to my brother's service. It was very appreciated by me and my family, so I just figured I would mention that because it's the first time I've seen all of you together. I've seen each one of you at the different listening sessions that we went to. So I just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate it, and they were beautiful. And I wanted to start by talking about the position over at the school department that is going to be vacating, which is the Finance Director. Martha has given her notice and she'll be leaving, I think, first week in August. And I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I plan to do everything I can to help the school while they look for a competent replacement. I don't want them to rush to pick anybody just to have somebody. I certainly will do whatever I can to help, and I just wanted to let you guys know that. I don't know if it brings you any comfort. I think they're probably more nervous about it than you guys are, but I figured I would mention, you know, whatever I have to do.
It does. A lot of comfort.
We had a, we had a big to-do list working together going forward, so just wanted that to kind of hopefully, obviously, they need to find the person and bring him up to speed.
Yeah, and I am on the search committee as well, so that can help to have input of, you know, who they're picking and whatnot. So I just figured I would just leave with that, just because it's kind of a big issue.
Yeah, certainly.
Yes, Bob?
If you don't mind, I may as well add, since Judy's still sitting here and hasn't thought to escape, the school's HR Director has resigned, effective in a couple of weeks. So that vacancy will be short-term, and Judy has made the same offer to the school department that, you know, we have the shared position, plus we have Judy, and we'll pitch in any way we can to help the schools as they go through whatever process they need to fill the job, again, with a good person long-term. Don't go ahead, sorry.
And I know, Sharon, you have been working closely with Martha on a lot of different issues, I think, over the last year that I can recall.
Yeah, we've worked pretty well together. I mean, and I hope that the replacement will be somebody that will work with me and, you know, that we get along well, like we have. You know, I've worked well with Mary and Martha, so there hasn't been any issues between the town and the school and working together on things, so.
That's great.
Hoping for more of that going forward, but, you know, it's nice to be on the search committee to be able to have input into who that decision is.
I'm sure the school committee feels good about that, too, because, you know, it's a, I think that is a higher, a school committee hire.
It's a school committee hire.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But they take, I think the search committee presents however many candidates they think are viable candidates, and then the school committee selects, or says no, go back and, you know, do it again.
So where are they in that private, have resumes been collected or?
I think they just have a, I think a description is out there. I spoke to Martha today and they had some applicants already, although a small number. So we'll see what happens. I, I think she was told that they were looking to do something to start interviewing sometime mid-July, but I don't know. I don't, I guess it just depends on the volume of what they're getting and if they have anything in that mix that looks like a good fit, so. So we'll see. I think John said he would let me know when they were gonna get started and all that and make sure that I didn't have vacation plan time, which I do not. I just came back from vacation, so it should be fine. So hopefully that brings you guys comfort. I'm hoping it brings the school committees some comfort because I certainly will be willing to do anything to help them, so.
Well, it's good that they don't have to rush because, you know, first of all, the middle of the dead of summer is a very challenging time to hire in any, in any business, you know.
And it's not a typical time that somebody like that would be looking because it's really a bad time to vacate your position.
Yeah, right.
Most people don't want to leave at that time. It's a very, very busy time of year for both Martha's School and the town side for closing up the year. And there's a lot of reporting that gets done. It's really not an ideal time to need that position replaced. And then there's also some options of maybe some people that we can bring in to help, you know, because I'm only one person, you know, there's, their needs are great, so, you know, there's some options out there. So I'm sure we'll entertain all of them, but I certainly am willing to do whatever needs to be done to move things forward, and I thought I'd mention that. So the other thing I want to tell you is for fiscal sixteen, we're in good shape. We're about seventeen thousand dollars shy of a hundred percent of revenues collected, and that's with one point two million dollars still coming in from the state next week. So we're probably gonna have in excess of budget at least a million dollars, like most years, for revenues.
Is that tax, is that local aid, tax revenues, sixteen thousand dollars short of a hundred percent?
Well, yeah, but we still have nine days and we collect a lot every day.
No, no, but I'm, I'm, but I'm saying that's, that's a small, I mean.
That's a small.
It's a tiny amount.
We're almost at, I mean, basically, it's ninety-nine point nine.
So that's assuming that everybody's, like, there's nobody to link around their property taxes.
Well, we make assumptions when we put our budget in of like a certain amount of abatements, like six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that means the abatements are less than what we, you know, what we put in that pool. So we got one hundred percent, and we tend to be over a hundred percent on revenues, projected revenues. And then there are things that we get in revenues that we don't project for because we don't know they're coming. Sometimes that's FEMA money because it might be a storm that maybe we get approved for later. We don't know it's coming, so it won't be budgeted. I know MIA dividends, those are things that we seem to be getting every year, but you can never count on it. It's their discretion whether they give it or not, but that tends to help the pool. So there's things like that that are kind of built-ins that actually help us in that regard, but.
Well, I would say that's a, in my mind, that's a real tribute to the way that you budget. I think that kind of conservative approach to not be overly aggressive in expectation pays dividend later, and, you know, as Barry points out, the idea of coming in that close.
I mean, if every business had an A and R that was at ninety-nine point nine percent, I think we'd be.
Yeah.
Yeah, the money we hold for capital projects, even though we know it might be earning interest, we don't, we don't project, you know, for that
Right.
because it's, it would be all over the place. We want it to be more like what we would really earn without that money. So things like that are kind of built-in. So I'm expecting at least a million dollars over projection for fiscal sixteen. Expenses were at like ninety-two percent, but it's kind of hard, hard to call what that's gonna do because at those last, that last week, people are, you know, finalizing all their stuff and then also all the payroll that goes on for those last, you know, like last two weeks of June are gonna be processed, so it's kind of hard to say what we're gonna call it.
It seems inevitable. Every year we have certain bills that we've gotta get special dispensation to pay because they run in, you know, at the end, too.
Salaries tend to be like for fire, like over time. Sometimes things just run over and we go to FinCom for that or whatnot. So we are in good shape. I'm not overly concerned about anything in that regard. We recently had a ratings call because we did issue bonds today, and we do still have, maintain our AAA bond rating, and we issue bonds at one point two-six percent today for the library project, the retaining wall, the modulars.
Bob sent us that good news today. I, I think just, you know, stop and say that again.
Yeah.
We issued debt at one point two-six percent.
Insane.
That is not a reflection of just that money is cheap. It's a reflection of the credit rating that the town has,
Yep.
of which that we have gotten because of the fiscal-prudent financial planning and management and the hard decisions that we've made over the years and will continue to make. It wasn't by accident. So I just, I, I need to state that and be crystal clear.
And that is with the uncertainty of that CLT litigation that's going on. Even knowing that we have that out there and not knowing a number, they still felt comfortable leaving that AAA bond rating on us because we are so strong.
And we borrowed again, what was the number? One point two-six percent.
One point two-six percent.
I'm writing that down.
And we were excited about the one point four-nine percent of the last issuance, and we even went lower than that.
Yeah, so everybody understands what that is. We actually sell bonds, and, you know, there's a, there's a rating at what those cost, based on its rating, they cost a certain amount.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and I think people queue right up to buy a Redding, a AAA bond, and so our debt is viable. I would echo what Barry's saying. It's, it really is a, it's a tribute to the way that things have been done despite the fact that, you look, we, we all know that we're facing certain financial challenges. Accounting for our money and keeping track and being fiscally prudent is not what our problem is. And that's now been fortified by, by a national rating agency, so.
Back-to-back, you know, the last rating was the AAA, and so very, very good and says a lot about how strong we are financially, so.
And, and the difference, the rate that we would have gotten if we maybe weren't AAA? How many, you know, hundreds of thousands?
They don't ever quote you that.
But is it safe to say it's?
It's really hard. It's hard.
It's hard to know.
Wouldn't be hundreds of thousands.
It would be tens of thousands.
Probably.
But we have a better rating than the US government, so that's, no.
That goes without saying.
We work hard.
We pay our bills.
Last I checked, there was no printing press in the basement.
No.
And just one other thing on that. We refinanced some old water debt, the MWA buy-in, actually. It saved half a million dollars for our water rate payers over the next few years.
That's breaking.
And, you know, it didn't receive a lot of attention at the time, but a few years back, we saved three and a half million dollars for the taxpayers by refinancing the high school debt. And that wasn't the case where three and a half million is freed up to spend on something else. It was three and a half million dollars the taxpayers did not have to pay the town as part of that exclusion.
Right.
So that's a pretty big number, but if you divide it by the number of years and the number of households, suddenly it only became a couple hundred bucks a household, but still,
It's still.
three and a half million is three and a half million.
And I think, Bob, one of the things that, look, the average person gets their tax bill and they don't look at how much they saved. They look at how much it is. And it's generally more than it was the year before. So I think it is important to pause and talk about the fact that those kinds of steps, I mean, the step with the school was, that is material. Three and a half million dollars worth of.
Way I explained to FinCom at the time, knowing it wasn't really apples and apples, is, you know, the library took two votes, ten million and three and a half. The second one was really free, not really, but we saved that much by refinancing the high school, so it didn't cost taxpayers any more than we, we had just done nothing.
I think it is important for the public to be aware of that, and I think it's worth the pause. I'm glad Barry slowed us down here for a second to talk about this. For people to realize that there is somebody at the switch, you know, paying attention.
Yeah, we're constantly looking for the opportunity to refund this debt at lower rates, especially with the AAA bond rate.
We're tired to get it, so.
Yes, exactly. The other issue I had to discuss was the Audit Committee met on May fifth to talk about the results of the fiscal fifteen audit, which went very well. We didn't have any findings of any kind to really discuss. They, you know, some heads up about some changes that are coming forward, but that, you know, nothing, nothing that was cause for concern like we had with the revolving funds last year, so. And they had come out the following week to do preliminary audit work. I was not here because of my brother, but that went well, and they will be back in September to do their final audit work. They always come up pretty early, but for whatever reason, we always end up having that meeting later. I don't know. You know, it takes a long time to wrap it up, or maybe they get going on other projects, but they usually do most of their fieldwork with us in September, and maybe they come back and do a couple of things, you know, a couple of months later, but for some reason, we can't seem to get together, get the Audit Committee together before like May or June. I'm not sure why.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, Sharon, so last year when we met, the revolving funds were, were the topic of the opinion letter. Do you have a view as to where they sit today now as we bring this year of a vote?
I feel like they're, they're doing much, much better because we, we, we had some plans of what to do to try and correct the situation. There was no immediate solution that was gonna correct it, completely right it, because you can't take anything out of the revolving fund that's not related to what it's intent.
Correct.
So if it's pre-K, it's gonna be for pre-K. If it's extended, you know, so you can't really charge the fund for more than what it costs to run the program. But we did have, like, for the, the special ed program, there was one year that they didn't take the offset at all, I think it was fiscal thirteen. So we made the decision to charge more in the current year as a correction, and DOR seemed to agree that that would be our right. You know, so we did some things of that nature, and there were certain enrichments that were done to programs, like capital items that are one-time things for those programs to start to bring those balances down. So, and Martha had agreed, and hopefully the new person who replaces her will agree, that we will take the support that is budgeted, that is the cost of the program.
Right.
You know, unless there's some extenuating circumstances, why? And the, the only circumstance I could see is that there isn't the money there because maybe the numbers didn't come in as what we thought. Otherwise, I expect that support to be exactly what they budgeted, and I won't book the entry for them unless they make that case to me because now that DOR has supported that that's the way it's supposed to be and our auditors are supporting that, because it's a very gray area and you get a lot of pushback when you say, well, I don't agree, it's their budget. And now that we've gotten a management letter comment that points to, this is the way it has to be, and it's still a little bit gray because, well, how much money can be in there? Not two years, where, you know, so we just need to get down to six months, maybe I would feel comfortable with, but anything.
Could you, um, could you, not tonight, because you don't have the numbers in front of you, but could you just generate a quick memo to summarize where we started last year this time?
And where we are currently? I certainly can, and send that out. Yep.
Yeah, when you get a chance. That'd be great, thank you.
It's still a continued item.
Mm-hmm. It's, it's something that's, you know, anytime something goes wrong, it becomes a, an area that's on my radar, you know, to be looked at more frequently than it would have been prior. So, you know, something like a management letter comment on something, it doesn't fall, it doesn't fall in deaf ears here. We definitely want to correct it and keep it corrected, not let it come up again, so.
As I recall from serving on the Audit Committee, at one point, the, isn't every year, doesn't something, some area come up for special consideration?
Yes, they, they test on a kind of, you know, kind of a cycle, all the different areas where cash is collected or where there's an increased risk. And so we can highlight certain things and say, hey, you know, this is an area where, you know, the Audit Committee can say that we think you really should do your testing this year. And I think that in fiscal sixteen, revolving funds are going to be reviewed because it's given us that one year of a correction to see what kind of progress that we're making. So the auditors are going to do it as part of the internal control testing.
Good.
Take a look and see what, what kind of progress we made and if they're satisfied with it. And they will comment on it, so, because it's being revisited and it was a prior management letter comment. And they did say that they felt that our corrections were going in the right direction, so we'll see if they feel that way when they're looking, you know, more detailed. Because we did spend a lot of time determining what the, the programs cost, what the projected revenues are, and are those closely aligned? And in most cases, yes, they were. It was just that one thing that they were doing differently. It's just a, I, I felt like it was just a difference of opinion on how it gets done. You know, I think that there was certain amount of budget certainty that they wanted. They wanted to say, well, if I'm gonna budget support, I want the money to be already there. I get that, but that's not the intent of the fund. So now that we have that clarification, I think going forward, we're going to all be on the same page about how to manage those funds. So I don't, I don't envision that we'll have another problem with them, but we shall see. It depends, I guess, on, you know, who comes in and how hard they push back.
Well, that certainly is, can be, become part of the interview process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Well, I mean, I, I remember Martha had mentioned when she had come on, because she hadn't been a school business manager or finance director for a school before she had a mentor, and when that whole thing came up regarding the management letter, she had mentioned it to her mentor, how would you have dealt with this? And she said those funds should have closed to free cash. You should have taken the full amount of support. So it was nice to hear that, you know, an experienced school business manager who works in the field, who's retired from the field, felt the same way. So that kind of reiterated to her that, yes, this isn't just a difference of opinion on our auditors and me, but, but that others in the field see it that way, too.
Along with the, the update on those accounts, you know, a management layer is kind of the last thing you wanna see. It's the last safeguard that tells you something's wrong. If you ever have any view or an opinion as to something that's trending in a direction, long before an opinion letter would be needed, please don't hesitate to bring it, bring it up. Even if it's just conversational or awareness or did you know, that's fine.
Yeah, exactly. I will.
Yes, Bob, just to make it clear, Sharon's predecessor had this discussion with Martha's predecessor many times, and they just disagreed. So they had the same opinion as that retired school business person, and just didn't have a mechanism to enforce it on the schools.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't so black and white where you could point to the law and says, it says you can only have X amount of dollars, or, you know what I mean? It was so gray that you, you couldn't win the argument, so you just.
Well, it sounds like, yeah, it sounds like progress has been made and, you know, everything's moving along, and that's, and that's really what, the end of the day, that's what's most important.
Having in the right direction.
Definitely.
And I think that we're on the same page. The school and the town are on the same page now, which is good, so. And I think that we're on the same page. The school and the town are on the same page now, which is good, so.
Great.
Um, other than that, um, I just want to kind of let you know what I'll be doing. June through November is my busiest time of year, so I will be straight out. Closing the year, getting free cash certified, doing the tax, um, rate setting, end of year report. I've always done a portion of it. I don't know if I'll be doing all of it this year, who knows? End of year is actually the school report that goes to DESE. Martha had been doing it, um, I'm familiar with it. I've never done it myself in, in its entirety, but I never did a Schedule A before I came here, so I'm quite sure I could follow along. So, yeah, I'll be doing a lot of reporting and then planning for the audits, um, and then any budget work that happens in October. So that June through November, I'm completely straight out, so.
And certification of free cash probably happens in the early fall. Do I remember that right?
Yeah, um, normally, normally I close the books late August, early September, and then I can calculate free cash. I usually do it sometime mid-September, I'd say, mid to late September.
So will we know that, I guess the reason I'm asking that question, um, I anticipate as we have visits with citizens and, and town meeting.
We might know it, yeah.
It would be probably a good thing. I mean, I know it's out of your control. You can only take it so far and then.
The only thing that's out of my control is what, how quickly DOR can come to us, because it, yeah, because they.
DOR is very unlikely to certify it by our, for instance, if you have a September special town meeting, how.
Probably won't be ready.
No, no.
I, it was a, just a curiosity of mine.
But we do tend to get it fairly early compared to some of our here communities. Um, but where we, our DOR rep did retire, we do have a replacement. I think that they have less staff than they had prior, so I would expect some delays in getting that kind of thing done, the free cash certification and the tax rate setting.
That's a shock. Yeah.
I think the tax rate setting, I think they work hard to try and move those along because they know people can't send those tax bills without that setting.
Right.
So it is going to be a particularly busy time of year for me, but if there's anything that I can do for you guys, additional research or anything of that nature, just let me know. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for Sharon that we haven't already raised?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. As always, thorough and timely. Thank you very much. I think we've got another hearing to get open here.
Uh, please, please take notice at the Board of Selectmen of the Town at Reading will hold a public hearing on June twenty first, two thousand and sixteen in Selectman's Room. Um, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. To increase the number of, uh, increase the no parking on the easterly side in front of seventy-five Pearl Street from one hundred feet to two hundred and eighty-five feet. Copy of the proposed document regarding the topic is available in the Town Manager's Office, sixteen Lowell Street, et cetera, et cetera.
Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Uh, what brings me here tonight, one of three, is, uh, we've had several complaints of parking on both sides of Pearl Street, uh, in the last few months since I've taken over. Yeah, it's due to the fact of sport, sporting events going on at the Pearl Street School, or the old Pearl Street School.
Sure. I'm not like Peter, I don't know every street in town.
So, right here, we're, we're, cars are parked on both sides of the road. It narrows it down very restricted for, to get rid of people down the road. Cars are parked on both sides. So right now, currently, the, it allows for a hundred feet, which is from the entrance of Longwood, about a hundred feet apart from here, of, uh, no parking. And also from.
It's much more fun to watch.
From a fire, from a fire emergency edge of where we're at here to Belmont for no parking. So it, so, so, um.
Let me kill some lights.
Turn the lights down a little bit and we'll, we'll have it. Oh, yeah. Popcorn?
So after meeting, after meeting with the, uh, Parking Traffic Transportation Task Force, we've come up, we improved through the task force to come in front of you to restrict parking from the hundred-foot spot all the way to the fire apartment access road, which is right here. But not, uh, which is an additional one hundred and eighty-five feet to allow parking only on one side, basically in front of the whole seventy-five Pearl Street. That's our proposal so far.
Questions? Yes.
One of the things you're always worrying about this is unintended consequences. You've got a fixed number of cars that can't go there. Any thought about where we redirect that excess traffic so that we don't have some of the issues we heard tonight?
Right. So we were considering all of it. I know it's a little bit of a walk, but anywhere on Belmont Street, it is very, Belmont is a very wide road, so anywhere on Belmont Street, they can park at all that area.
We put some, is the thought that we'd put informational signage or, you know, park here arrow or words to the.
Absolutely. Glad, those people of recreation would gladly, uh, come up with something like that as well. The problem is, I think, is that it's just been really busy in the park. So I drove down there myself personally when there was events going on. It is really is difficult in that area to have cars parked on both sides of the road.
I live at that little house on the edge of the map and, uh, you cannot get on Pearl Street. I mean, and you're worried about kids jumping out between the cars, so.
And I guess our, uh, thought process was where there is an actual granite sidewalk on this side, um, was to limit it, where people could park a little bit more on the shoulder, on, on the, on the west at least side to, uh, to allow for that. Because there is no restrictions right now on the west at least side at all. It's only on the east at least side of, you know, Pearl Street currently.
What's the, uh, width of that street? If, if folks parked on the street entirely, what would be the remaining width of the street, do you think? Is it, it's obviously a single lane, but.
Yeah, I, I don't have the numbers, to be honest. I'd have to talk to engineering or go out and measure, but I, but I, it is, it is narrower, you know. It is, yeah, it's.
It's tight.
Chief, was the thought, why, how come it never was extended that full length? What was the thought process that stopped it?
I, that's when we actually went back, I had officers obvious, say, you have to go back and look. We couldn't find the history on why it only went a hundred feet. But, uh, yeah, we actually researched a little bit going back and there was nothing we could find. Why it only went a hundred, because we thought, to be honest, we thought it would be the whole thing. When I had to go look, we said, oh, we needed to extend it the whole way, which is another one hundred and eighty-five pass rates currently.
Is, is there the capacity on that street, um, to do cut-ins by, uh, maybe on a future project?
Angle parking?
Not, not so much angle, but even just, you know, parallel parking, just, but not obviously where it is now. You'd have to cut into where the sidewalk area is.
Take more of the tree lawn, in other words.
Yeah, and then, you know, that would obviously have to extend the sidewalk as well too. Is there, is there enough area over there for that?
So there's a fence backed by the sidewalk, so you'd, that would be an issue at that point, unless we even, that whole, we had moved the fence and everything.
And this, yeah, so that's, that's right next to the athletic field is what we're talking about, is that right?
Right.
Correct.
Although it does have fair amount of clearance on the field. I, I don't know exactly, but I bet you could easily get five feet if you chose to an additional five or seven feet if you wanted to read that fence.
I do think that's private property though, right?
Well, however far the town's rights go.
Except for the people who get out there with swords on Sunday mornings. They're right on the edge.
Yes, sir.
No, when I live at ninety-one Pearl Street.
So I'm gonna need to ask you to identify yourself just for the record.
Tony Dalton, I think, ninety-five Pearl Street.
Thank you, Wayne.
Which is right there.
Okay.
And Chief and I have gone over this, uh, I've actually gone back to Chief Silver. Um, that little bit of a bend in the road right in the middle makes it that the cars going northbound, right there, cannot see anything coming southbound. When the cars are parked on, pro, to the school side of the road, forcing everybody going north into the southbound lane. Southbound can't see northbound coming until it's too late. I've actually seen the ambulance on its way to the assisted living facility. Come down Charles Street, around the corner in front of my house, go maybe thirty feet, have to stop because this car is coming northbound in the southbound lane. Back up, go back up Charles Street, down Harrison, up Orange, and back down Pearl Street to get to the assisted living facility. Now you're saying cut into the sidewalk. Pearl Street has just put a new circular driveway in front of the, what used to be the front door to the school.
Right.
Is now the front door to the facility. They have moved the soccer field out to the street.
Right.
You're saying it's less than five feet between the fence and the new field.
I am very familiar with what you're talking about.
When you're past, when you're past back on right-hand side of that, on.
You're right.
The school street, or the school side of the street, your question was how much room is left in the southbound lane?
I'd forgotten about the new construction.
Less than ten feet.
You're right.
Okay.
I measured the street. I'm a former police officer and I did traffic studies. I've measured all that out. I have the photographs. This problem goes back to nineteen ninety-three. It's been worked on. It's been researched all the way back to Chief Silver, his staff, Chief Cormier's staff, Chief Zagala's staff. We finally get the cars off that side of the street, so at least when people come in north or south, you can see across that bend as to what's coming before it's too late.
And so it's your, I, I interpret what you're saying as an endorsement of the chief's recommendation.
That's correct.
Maybe that's where that hundred foot stopped originally, was just so people could see around that bend.
And I have with me photographs of that area with cars jammed up on both sides. An oil truck stopped in the middle of the street that cannot move. Number of car accidents that have taken place there because of the cars being parked on the right-hand side. Parked in front of the stop sign in front of the house, which became a suggestion because there's a truck parked, a box truck parked in front of the stop sign.
I think I've been behind all of those trucks at one time or another in my life. Hey, I'm on Pearl Street a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, is there something about that, the Longwood place that makes it particularly a pinch point that doesn't also apply to the southernmost part of Pearl Street? In other words, do you still have the same parking on both sides problem as you get down to, I guess that's Orange Street that cuts across? Good, yeah, right there. Is there still some of a problem where you have parking on both sides at that point or is that?
I don't know if it's seen wider down there, but I don't think we have the problem of people parking down there as much as we do, I think, with the games and everything that's going on up in this area.
It might move there as a concern.
Yeah.
Right, I agree. Yeah, and the other concerns like Bill brought up was, we do have a lot of the FID departments responding to the calls here at seventy-five Pearl Street.
My question is, would you, it's not a motion, but would you, I guess you'd come back at a future date and expect, expect.
And consider the, give it the whole length of it, right?
Yes, Larry.
Uh, Larry Gilson, seventy-fourth Street. So we're right across the, um, from Longwood, the driveway. Their driveway and our driveway is just about right across from each other.
Right, okay.
And that point, and I don't disagree with anything you say. As a matter of fact, I, I do agree with it. This is, this is a larger problem than just, you know, who's right or wrong. So I, I do wanna, you know, let you know that I agree with everything that he's saying. It is very difficult that cars are parking on the east side, on the Longwood side, uh, because they do cut into the road. And so when you have traffic going back and forth, you're almost limited to one lane. So that, I, I hope that gives you an idea of how wide the road is.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so, uh, the, the problem that I, I, I see as, uh, the counter is that all the cars are now parking up on the sidewalk.
Across the street, you mean?
And that really. Uh, across the street.
In front of your house.
In front of, yeah, in front of my house. And it, it really is a problem getting out, so, you know, part of the thing that, part of the thing that, yeah.
I agree with you. I, wait, you shouldn't be parked on the other side.
Yeah, so part of the thing that, that, um, you know, you're kind of getting at, the reason why some of those traffic jams are there is not just because the cars are parked along one side or the other. It's because you have traffic going both ways. And you, let's just face it, people are inconsiderate. You know, and anyone that comes by, you think that people should pull over to the side of the road and they don't do that. Right, so we get all those types of combinations of idiocy that, that winds up happening. I'm pulling out of my driveway and I nearly get clipped by someone who doesn't wanna stop. And they just go right around me. Now, I can't see them, they can see me. You would think someone would stop. And I'm, I'm just fortunate I had a car that had collision warning, so I stopped immediately.
Yep.
That person just swung right around. And we're asking kids to cross that street where that type of, um, activity, that type of bad behavior, I'll call it, exists. So, you know, it's like one side or the other isn't really a great option, but it's, it's also that we're picking up the burden for having a sidewalk.
And so you're concerned, do I understand your concern then to be that if you further limit as is proposed here, the parking is gonna further congest the other side of the street?
Yes.
Rather than move it to Belmont or, you know, wherever. I mean, uh, there is a certain reality to Pearl Street. I mean, it's, you wouldn't think it would be Main Street, but it kinda is. I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of traffic on it.
Sure, for locals, there's a lot of traffic.
That's the only road in town, is that, is that correct?
Say that again?
That was the original Main Street to Pearl, is that correct?
Uh, it wouldn't surprise me. I mean, it does act, if you look at it, it makes sense.
It's probably the longest street.
Yeah.
Pearl. So it is, and, and you get a lot of through traffic there. As soon as you get a, a, a backup between Main Street and one twenty-nine, people start going down. They, they don't go down Belmont as much because they don't, they don't see the proof there, but they, Pearl is the, the, uh, main road that people take.
Yep.
Especially trucks, whether they should go down there or not. Um, and then you get Harrison, which is a little bit more limited.
Harrison, yeah.
But there is quite a difference in traffic.
But it's interesting that Harrison had a similar problem, not that many years ago, and they kinda redid what was going on parking over there as well. Yes, Barry?
Yeah. Yeah, which was nice.
Chief, chief, was there ever, I mean, I know you'd, you'd solve one problem and create twenty-five others, but would part of this problem be mitigated if that section of Pearl Street was a one-way?
Our only concern with that would be is where you're coming in.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not necessarily one way or the other, but just to make people go, kinda go that way so that there's.
Right.
You're routing them right into the residential neighborhood though, which I guess they're cutting through anyway, so.
Which way?
I, 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 I've just.
By rush hour?
I have, I don't know.
Yeah, I, we haven't, I'll be honest, we haven't done any type of study on it, but, uh, we can. We just haven't done anything like that so far.
Here, is a first pass, if you rather than deal with the flow issue, which is what Barry's poking at, you wanna deal with just the obstruction issues of our.
Yep.
Right now, it's just way too tight when we're getting, trying to get through this, so we, you know, we thought the simple solution was that just extending, you know, parking, which is already there on that side, another one hundred and eighty-five feet.
With regard to the comments made here today about folks parking on sidewalks or tree lawns.
If they're parked on the sidewalk, we can gladly tag. Yeah, that's not an issue at all. Just call. I will have them cruise it down there regularly, check it like we do right now at the end of the bank rock and gladly there. So if they're on the tree lawn a little bit, we're gonna, we'll, we're gonna allow that. But if they're on, they're on the sidewalk itself, they're gonna be tagged. That's not an issue.
I think it is important to, to follow what the, the chief is saying. You gotta let him know.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, you really do. And we've had other neighbors in other parts of town come in and say, well, you know, uh, the signs are there, but people are still doing it. Well, you gotta help the police because they can't be everywhere unless they're alerted.
And to be honest, I didn't know that people were, are not supposed to park on, on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean.
No, they can't have it.
But.
In the walk of the sidewalk, it's a twenty dollar fine. It's a lot of getting down there.
And, and you've seen, you've seen that area though, so when you take a look at the berm, all, all the way, well, if I can point out the area. At least from, from, from here all the way down, uh, to here, you can see where the edge of the road, where the berm is actually cut. And it cuts underneath the road. So, you know, you, you can solve the problem by having people not park on the sidewalk, but what you start to do is deteriorate the edge of the road. Which is just gonna increase costs because sooner or later, that's gonna have to be repaired.
Yeah. Well, I, I think at a certain point, I mean, I, I do hear what you're saying, Larry, and I am sympathetic to it. This thing, I, I think, you know, kind of the combination. It's a difficult situation that's gonna need to be worked with and I, you know, my suspicion is that, you know, the chief is making a presentat, a recommendation here. And is gonna stay fluid about how, how it unfolds. I mean, the idea that you can help him help you and you and your neighbors by letting, when people are on a sidewalk, they're just not supposed to be there. And, you know, a, a month or so of enforcement and you're in, you know, in season for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were down at, we were down at Morton during the, uh, playoffs of Babe Ruth and, um, after the first game when chief's, chief's folks were tagging people. By the second game, there was nobody parked where they weren't supposed to be.
A, a little bit of enforcement goes a long way, but we need to, you need to help them. That's what I think. And it, it seems like this is a, I mean, the proposition seems, in my mind, to be a, a safety issue. Both points are safety issues. I think we gotta get one going and see if we can work on the other. I think signs routing them to a wider thoroughfare i- is probably a good idea. Now, would recreation do that, Bob? Would they need to come to us to do that?
Yeah, they could because it's a field. We lease it, so it's a little different, but we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Does that need to be in the motion tonight or?
No.
So i- in the interest of time, because we are running a little behind, is there, are there more questions or comments?
Well, just a clarification. So, you know, the berm area, again, I've, I've got a concern about that because it is deteriorating quite a bit at this point. Uh, is that part of not parking on the sidewalk or is that?
Okay, so if, if the berm is a- attached to the tree lawn, correct? That's what's, by the other side of the berm, by the sidewalk?
Now, help me understand the tree lawn.
The tree lawn is, is a grassy, it's a little grassy area.
The tree lawn is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if they're parked on the tree lawn, no, we're not gonna tag, but if they're parked on the actual sidewalk itself, we're gonna get a tag.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I, for, for, for what's happened to the berm, well, if it makes the, create the road be a little bit wider to get cars by, you know, from my opinion, for a safety issue, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Unless it's not blocking the sidewalk for you or your driveway. You know, obviously not any issue at the end of your driveway, call us.
Gentlemen, you were saying some of the, both the recreation partners, if you speak with John Fudo, be well aware of this problem, uh, he's been working with. John, when you were saying some of both the recreation departments, if you speak with, uh, John Fuedo, are you well aware of this problem, uh, even though I'm myself, my wife, and somebody on the neighbors?
Yep.
So, if you talk to Mr. Fuedo, can you, you know, and?
I, I, and I know he's, because I've been re- he's on there for many years, I know you're right about that, so.
Yeah, hi, I'm Jeff, eighty twenty four Bell Road and a U ten soccer coach that coached here all season. And, um, it's, I, I completely agree with everything you're saying, to the point where I will, next year, if I have the option, I will refuse to practice there because it, it's impossible to park, it is absolutely a safety issue. You've got ten-year-old kids kicking soccer balls all over the place, there's a five-foot buffer between the field and the street. Balls are going in the street, kids start running after them, I gotta chase them to stop them. So, that's a big problem in and of itself, not to mention the fact, we've got towns coming from all, from all over the place. Stoneham, um, Medford, a bunch of other ones, Melrose, and they feel kind of unwelcome when they come here because there's nowhere to park. They pull in here, there's a big sign that says, you can't park here unless you're going to, um, to the, to the residence.
Appro, the residences, yeah.
So, I mean, not to sound drastic, but I, I would stop using this field, and I, I know land in this town is impossible to come by, but if we could carve out a piece of Memorial Park and build a U ten soccer field there. I, I don't wanna play here anymore, it's become, it's become that bad.
Yeah.
Real quick.
Yes, Kevin.
Um, I'll be quick, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree, Jeff, um, with you a hundred percent, that's actually a thought I was just hearing, is everyone's going round and round talking about this. It feels like we're putting a Band-Aid on, on a larger issue, which is, you know, maybe this is not a good s- field for, for us to be using, I understand.
Yep.
As Jeff mentioned, field space is a premium in this town, certainly, um, but we, we lease this space currently, Bob?
I think it might have been a ninety-nine year lease.
Yeah.
Okay.
At some point.
So, you know, I, I think I would, you know, I'd certainly make the recommendation, um, um, I, I'm for this, what the chief's presented us tonight, this makes perfect sense from a public safety standpoint. Moving forward though, I think we really do need to review not utilizing this field in the future and, and, and maybe getting enough, some space elsewhere.
Well, you know, the recreation committee is one of our advisory committees, and I think what we can do is, is move that out to them, you know, if we're leasing this thing, maybe it becomes a small field and half of it becomes a parking lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sh, I don't know whether we even do that, but I think that's, at the issue at hand, um, there's a proposal in this hearing, further public discussion on this hearing.
One last quickie.
Yes, John.
Is there any other means of aggress onto the property, chief, or is it only on the Pearl Street? In other words, can you get from Belmont onto the field or Chiricahet Road?
It's all private owned.
Yeah, we go through Bill's backyard, didn't think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Motion?
Yeah.
We gotta close the hearing, yep.
Move that the board of selectmen close the hearing on increasing the number, uh, the no parking on East Lee Side in front of seventy-five Pearl Street from a hundred feet to two hundred and eighty-five feet.
Second.
Um, discussion? All those in favor closing the hearing? Five zero.
Move that the board of selectmen approve amending Article twelve point one of the Town of Reading Traffic and Parking Regulations to prohibit parking on the East Lee Side in front of seventy-five Pearl Street for approximately two hundred and eighty-five feet.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Okay.
I'd encourage you, Larry, to make those calls when that, it, it won't take long, the enforcement will, it will quickly solve at least the sidewalk problem.
Yeah, it will, I'm, I'm actually really concerned about the berm though, too.
Well, I think we just have to see what goes on, we're gonna refer this out to the recreation committee for study.
Can public works do anything about, about it, through the backfilling there?
Yeah, our engineers can look at it, um, their general concern would be drainage, so, you know, if it was a steep hill or a hill, that'd be a whole different issue.
Yes. Right, right, because drainage is on the other side of the street.
Yeah. Yeah, but they, they mandate curbs if there's a certain strain, uh, drain water, drainage issue, it probably wouldn't be.
I'd, I'd love to see a curb, yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even mind going right up to the sidewalk and cutting into it.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like looking into getting, uh, getting the cars not even parking there in the first place is gonna be the best option, so we'll, we'll certainly, uh, have the recreation department look into that.
Yeah. Okay, time for another hearing.
Yep, to the inhabitants of the Town of Reading, please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, at the Selectmen's Meeting Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. Uh, no bus access beyond House number two thirty on Bancroft Avenue, copy of the proposed document regarding this topic, et cetera, et cetera.
Good evening. Uh, okay, so this is the follow-up from our last time here on Bancroft Ave, we just don't wanna allow buses that we have to be able to back up in an unsafe direction from the end of Bancroft. Two thirty, is that right, I think this house here, uh, we're just looking to stop them from the dead end out of coming and having to back out.
Yeah.
That's all. Uh, it, it used to be a bus sign, no bus sign eight years ago, I think it was not supposed to be there, but we couldn't find it in the pa, parking traffic rules regulations, but we'd like to actually put it in there and do it right.
Because I think that house is one oh four Hart Shore, and the two thirty is probably next door.
It's actually, it's right, yeah, right, or this one, it's one of these, right, yeah, that, that's on Hart Shore.
Yeah, yeah, I thought, that's one of those.
So, the entirety of that dead end, that cul-de-sac is off limits?
Bus free now.
Bus free, that's what we'd like.
Yeah, so they have, if they actually do come down that street, rather than drop them off at the field house or?
Stikes come out of the road.
Yeah, they have to turn on the Hart Shore and, and be, and leave, leave the neighborhood essentially.
Right, and switch to new signs, which are in order, I understand from recreation to show people the way to find our route, show them.
Okay. Okay. Um, questions from the board?
It's a no-brainer.
Nope.
Yep.
This is an easy one.
This is, I think, what we've asked you to do, and then what the neighbors ask you to do, I think this is right on the money. Public comment?
Move that the board of selectmen close the hearing restricting bus access beyond House number two thirty on Bancroft Ave.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing? Five zero.
Move the Board of Selectmen amend Article twelve point one of the Town of Reading Traffic and Parking Regulations to prevent bus access beyond two thirty Bancroft Ave.
Second.
Um, discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Okay, another one?
Okay, another hearing?
To the inhabitants of the Town of Reading, please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. No parking on the northerly side of Charles Street between, uh, between Dana.
Dana Road and Boswell Road.
Oh, that's, uh, okay.
Yeah, between Dana Road and Boswell Road.
Yeah, Dana Road and Boswell Road, between eight AM and three thirty PM on Monday through Friday. Is that right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It's across from the field.
Yep.
I think there's another piece to that, too.
Yep, and enact Article five point four point four, additional time restriction on Charles Street.
You're on again, chief.
Currently, right now, as it is today, it's at eight to nine thirty and two thirty to three thirty, is the same restrictions that are already there. We're just looking to extend it, I, we've spoken with Kil, we've spoken to several neighbors, the reason is, is there's additional, uh, halftime kindergarten coming in out of school. And when, when that happens, the kids are trying to cross to their parents' cars, it's very distracting, it's very difficult to see coming out of either of these streets, that's why they had put those rules and regulations into effect years ago. So, we're just looking to extend it now from the whole time that schools.
Yeah, 'cause there's, 'cause there's different hours for school now.
Correct, that's the only reason we're here, but plenty for this. It's the same side, everything's the same except for just extend it for the whole day instead of from, uh, part of the day.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep. Chief, parking includes standing, stopping, there's no vehicle.
Correct, we just don't want anyone waiting over there or anything else, we've been moving them along during the hours we can, right, it's during the middle of the day with a kindergarten to get melted, it becomes an issue.
So, it clears the visibility, it clears the, yeah, okay. Any questions from the board?
Absolutely.
Questions from the public? Barry, you're on.
All right, move that the Board of Selectmen in, uh.
Close the hearing.
We're closing.
Five E.
Oh, close the hearing, um. Oh, it's not on there, oh, I'm sorry. Close the hearing, additional time restrictions on parking on Charles Street between Dana Road and Boswell Road between the hours of eight AM and three thirty PM, Monday through Friday, enacting Article five point four point four K of the Town of Reading Traffic and Rules Regulations.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor closing the hearing? Five zero. You're on, Barry.
Move that the Board of Selectmen amend Article twelve of the Town of Reading Traffic and Parking Regulations to replace, uh, five point four point four D to five point four point four K by adding the following. Pursuant to Article five point four point four K, parking shall be prohibited on the northerly side of Charles Street between Dana Road and Boswell Road between the hours of eight AM and three thirty PM on Monday through Friday.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Okay.
And then, isn't there another piece of this?
Yep, another hearing.
Yep.
Well, is that actually another motion?
Another motion here.
Oh, like that hearing.
Move that the Board of Selectmen enact Article five point four point four K, additional time restriction to include, no person shall park a vehicle from eight AM to three thirty PM on Monday through Friday.
Well, that's right.
On any of the streets or parts of the streets to which this article has been applied, as listed under Article twelve of the Town of Reading Traffic and Parking By.
Second.
Regulations.
Discussion?
Uh, um.
Yes.
I've never heard, maybe I just some recall, it was between amend and enact, why is an amendment just enough to? Chief?
I don't know.
Got a new chief?
Do, do Town Council.
It's fine, I didn't mean to put anyone in the spot, I've never had to enact and then, or amend and then enact.
Oh, you're.
Now, that's an, that is an.
Double secret probation, right?
Yes.
Don't just amend it, enact it.
Okay.
I think we were thinking because it was already, the, the hours were already so far, eight to, eight to nine thirty, and then two thirty to three thirty, now to amend those hours.
So, we amend it and then we're gonna enact in the.
Enact it, yes.
We, we really mean business.
And then we're gonna take ac, then we're gonna take action.
This is serious, we're gonna do this twice, okay.
Discussion.
Any other material questions? Uh, hearing done, um, we have a motion, is that right? We have a second?
We do.
We do? We have no more discussion, we have a vote, all in favor? Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, thank you very much, chief.
Okay, next hearing.
Okay, please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, at seven fifty PM in the Selectmen's Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. An application for an all alcohol restaurant liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, DBA Chipotle Mexican Grill, forty-six Walkers Brook Road, Reading, Mass. Copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the Town Manager's Office, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. Uh, all interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing by email prior to six PM on June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, to townmanager@cireading.m a.us. Boyota Robert Will Asher, Town Manager.
Okay, and do we have representatives from, uh, Chipotle Mexican Grill?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
You're on.
Thank you, I'm Matt Fogelman, I'm an attorney, uh, office in Newton, uh, represent Chipotle all across the Commonwealth. I've, uh, been involved with about twenty different towns, uh, getting licenses for them. Um, with me is Shane Wilson, he's the proposed, uh, well, he's the manager, but proposed general manager for the purposes of the, of the license, uh, before, before you put the board. Um, happy to, to take any questions, um, you know, Chipotle is, uh, very well-known company based out of Colorado, um, restaurants all across the state and internationally. Um, about twenty in the Commonwealth, been open in Reading for a couple of months, yeah, uh, two months, uh, things are going well, you know, off to a good start, they're very happy to be here in town, and I hope the town is happy to have us here. Uh, and, um, you know, again, happy to, happy to take any, any questions.
Yep.
Or, or I can provide more of an overview as well, uh, whatever, whatever the board prefers.
Well, let's start with some questions and then we'll see if we need to keep rolling.
Mr. Wilson, our couns, uh, councillor Fogelman, um, a couple of questions, so I've been to many Chipotles, but alcohol's a new thing for me, how do you make the call which sites get it, which sites don't?
Oh, that's a good question, um, it, it is the company's preference, both in the Commonwealth and in general, to have alcohol, um, at its restaurants. It is part of the model, if you will, um, in, most of the restaurants in the Commonwealth do have them, not all. A couple of exceptions to that are, there are towns where they're, they're capped, they're quota, uh, particularly in Boston, um, and elsewhere.
Sure.
And the going rate for licenses these days, it can be upwards of two, three, four hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, Chipotle could afford that, if it wanted to, it's not a mom and pop shop, but it is not a huge part of their business. So, they have made the decision that they're not gonna spend that kind of money on a license, it just doesn't make sense given the volume of their sales. You have a certain restaurant where people are gonna be sitting down and ordering steaks and fish and having a two-hour meal, obviously, those types of restaurants have to happen, right, it's hard for them to stay in business. Chipotle has made the decision that they're okay with not having it if it means spending that type of money. That being said, when they can get it, they do like to, um, and that is generally when they're available.
Makes, makes perfect sense, right?
Um, so, it's, it's enough, it's enough of their business that they like to have it, but it's not crucial where they need it in order to survive.
And Bob, this application is for al- all alcohol, not just beer and wine? I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it is.
It is, but it explains what they do, uh, part of the, the model, this is across the border, nationwide, they only do beer and margaritas. So, in order to do beer and margaritas, you need a full liquor license.
Right.
Some towns, there's only beer and wine available, then they'll go for that and they'll just do the beer and not the margaritas.
Reasons to over.
When there's a full license available, again, part of the model is they like to get it, but it's only beer and margaritas, no other hard alcohol, no wine.
That, that. That explains it.
Um, so that's, if you, if you're going into a Chipotle, you're only gonna get a beer and margarita, or if there's no margs, then you're just gonna get the beer, and that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, Barry.
So, Mr. Wilson, you'd be the, the person who's the general manager, kind of on the, on the, on the shop floor day to day?
Yes.
Um, so, Chipotle obviously is a, you know, huge corporation, who do you report to? Do you report to Colorado, or is there a ownership group that owns your restaurant? Or is there an ownership group that owns a series of restaurants? I just kinda would like to.
Chain of command?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you can go ahead and I can chime in too.
Um, so, it's a, uh, is, it's corporate owned, it's not franchise, um, but there is a, a hierarchy in terms of leadership that oversees, um, the immediate area, the region, as well as the entire company. Um, it's a company of over two thousand plus stores, but I, myself, report to an area manager, um, my area manager reports to a regional director, and then the regional director is someone that would communicate with our officers in Colorado.
So, you're one of how many that report to an area manager, do you know?
Uh, one of six.
One of six, okay.
For what can you see them?
Uh, I just on the deck, but I see.
Kind of on a regular, kind of going forward basis?
Probably once a week, twice a week.
So, you've got an extra pair of hands available to you and to advise and, uh, and provide corporate counsel at least, uh, so.
Yes. Yes, of course.
Oh, absolutely, there are multiple chains, um, that go from area all the way to Colorado, to me, to, you know, whoever.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we're asking these kind of questions, this is a very different kind of license for us.
Sure.
Um, I mean, I realize that Chipotle is a different type of fast food, if you will, um, it, you know, it's certainly very different than the burger places. But it's also very different than, you know, we'll say, you know, maybe a Chili's, I mean, it's, you know, so.
Sure.
So, it's a little bit different, I think, I, this is what's prompting the que, at least I, you know, these are questions I'd be interested in as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, as much as for folks watching on TV that may have the same questions, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure, absolutely, I mean, the, it, you know, it is, like I said, it's part of the model, you know, the reason that they like to do it is, when you go to a Chipotle, just like if you go to a Hilton, you wanna have a certain, you're used to a certain experience. And if you go to a, uh, the Hilton in Boston, you want it to be the same as when you go to the Hilton in Los Angeles, you know, and so, it's kind of the same idea.
Yes. Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a customer who, who likes going there, who expects going there, who wants to go in California or in Boston, New York, whatever, has a kind of the same experience.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, the managers are trained to, to monitor the floor carefully, also assistant managers, um, they, they know who's, they, who's buying the drink, who's drinking the drink. You know, you have to buy, you buy food, you can't just go in there and, and do, get a drink, you know, I mean.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't sound like it's designed as a watering hole.
It's not, it's not, and people don't sort of hang out and let's have one more, you know, it's, it's just not that.
Yeah.
You go in, you know, you get your.
You order your food, you order a margarita, or a beer.
You get your burrito, you wanna have a beer, you sit down, you, and you leave in half an hour, twenty minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, so you deny somebody coming and just wanting to buy a drink?
Yes, we, we do it.
Okay.
And people don't do that though, you know, I mean.
Now, where, where you're doing a lot of turns business, I assume most folks are on site for forty-five minutes max and then on their way, as opposed to an evening out.
Absolutely.
Evening. Is there any, any different behavior on the part of people when they come in where they tend to get more rowdy, or they know they're going somewhere else, so they're kind of getting juiced up for the, what's coming later, do you see any of that kind of behavior?
Not mine.
Descend to Chili's?
No, no, you really, it's just not that type of.
Oh, boy, here we go, this is gonna break down fast, I can see that.
I've never seen one of these, so. About eight thirty, the chair lost control of the.
Yes. Barry, did you, I know you had a question.
Oh, I'm happy about it, no, no.
I, I did have a, yeah.
The price point is good, it's, you know, it's all fresh, you know, fresh meat and everything, so, um, you know, a lot of families, you know, um, because it's a nice price, you know.
Look, it doesn't, it doesn't seem from your comments and the, I think the, just reading the body English here, that, um, is a real concern, but we've always taken a really strong view out of the gate around service and service to minors and tips training. And where there've been transgressions, we deal with them pretty quickly and usually very strongly upfront, and, you know, it's kind of just a heads up, that's the way it's gonna be if there's a transgression. So, you know, going in, it's, it's the way we roll.
Understood, understood, and, and, you know, we take it very seriously, the company takes it very seriously, and of course, there have been over the history of fifteen years with, about two thousand restaurants you're going to have, you know, it's not perfect.
No one's perfect, we get it.
But if you look at the number of restaurants they have and the number of violations they've received, it's a pretty, it's a pretty low percentage.
Well, it is a, it is a, the regular habit of our, um, of our police department, is directed by our chief, that you, you're gonna get visited and somebody's gonna try to pop you. And we, we want you to. And we, we want you to stop them.
Yep.
I mean, that's gonna be the goal, and we do that, you know, so that you can, it's, it's really not to be at odds with you, it's to help you stay alert.
Of course.
You know, because what Mister Rena says is very true, I mean, I, we do have a rather serious history of, you know, taking this very seriously, so, Barry, I know you have another question.
Yeah, I just, I, I just have one question. So, um, you had mentioned that in, in your stores in Massachusetts, you know, you wanna obviously kinda keep the, you know, the experience level the same from, from store to store. But then in some communities, you don't have a liquor license.
Right.
Um, but you've opened anyway.
Correct.
Um, and you, you, the, the cost is prohibitive or they ran out of licenses, um, was sort of the reason we're here.
Yeah, well, the two go hand in hand, right?
Well, we, you know, we also too, right.
If they went out, they're like, yeah.
We, we also too have a limited number of licenses, not, a, a, and, and so my question is, so you opened under, you know, sort of, not with the expectation of getting, you opened anyway. Wasn't like you were taking, oh, you know, buying a lic- an existing license, taking over a restaurant. So you opened up, you know, without a, um, uh, all liquor license, um, with the expectation of operating anyway. So, um, you know, if you didn't get it, you, would you still operate in the same capacity? Uh, just kinda curious about, cause you opened up, I mean, you went in, you know, hoping you'd get it, but not, it wasn't guaranteed before you made the, before the corporation at least made the commitment to break around and open in Redding.
That's true. Um, that's a tough question for me to answer, um, Mister Vermin, I mean, I, uh, if you don't give us the license, are we gonna close? I mean, prob- probably not, no, no, I mean, I, I would say not. Um, do we, do we want to have the ability to serve our customers? Yes, we do, you know, do our customers enjoy having that option? They, they definitely do, we know that, I mean, that's been sort of proven in studies that they've done, surveys and so forth. Um, so, um, I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, we certainly, you know, we, they certainly are interested in having one, they, they.
I'm, I'm just. This is a unique, this is a unique, um, sort of situation here, and usually when a restaurant comes in, they're purchasing an already existing license, so this is a little different, right?
Right, right, and it's, it's kind of required almost, yeah.
And it sort of goes handed down, so that, okay.
So, so no, I would say we're different, but, um, you know, like I said, they, they, they do like it, they, they, they do want it, um, it's beneficial to their customers. People in the community, you know, your, people in Reading that wanna go in, I think they enjoy that opportunity.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if that answers the question exactly.
Kevin?
Um, yeah, just a couple of real quick questions. Mister Wilson, y- you have, um, experience in the past with al- all alcohol licenses?
Yes.
Okay. Um, how long have you worked in, in the business that had one?
Um, Chipotle itself, I've worked for the company for almost three years, uh, in different.
Okay. In New Hampshire?
Uh, in New Hampshire, as well as Vermont, um.
Okay, so you've not only worked in, um, uh, with all alcohol license, you've worked in Chipotles that have one?
Yes.
So you're kinda used to the, the routine and how, and how it operates?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, that's good. Um, the other question I had, real quickly, just was glad the chief's here, I didn't see any recommendation in our packet.
Age eighteen tonight.
Yeah, it's here.
Okay, that's, I'm looking on my computer.
Yeah, it's clear.
All right. That's my only other question I have.
You see how quick he is? Notice that page?
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
The only question I have, um, remaining for me at least, is, um, the spot your store is in, I think is a great spot for the store. Um, but I think you're gonna need to stay on top of your, your vendors that are delivering. Um, you know, uh, wine supply, well, you're not using wine, but, you know, liquor suppliers are notorious for, they pull up to the front door and they run in. That's gonna be the last place you want that to happen.
When you have a backdoor access that.
I, I know you got, I know you've got the back set up for it, and I just, I just caution you that, you know, the spot where your store is, um, I, I think you're the manager on site. You're gonna be able to manage that vendor from the beginning, and I think it's important you do that, I just pass that along as a, as a thought. So, uh, because obviously not only would it be bad for your business, but that particular place, high traffic, lot going on, lot coming, I mean, there's a lot coming and going all around you there, so. Um, using the back is really important.
Working with the vendor as well, just best times to deliver, you know, definitely when we're open, um, when we're not open, and that way it can just be coordinated, um, so that way there's just little to no, um, no barriers to that.
Yeah. Well.
And it's pretty much just beer that they're delivering, right?
Yeah.
Cause the.
Everything else is a mix.
Basically, I mean, they make it, they make it there, but.
Yeah. Um, anything else from members of the board? Members of the public, uh, yes?
Yes, uh, Derek Tom, uh, twenty seven, have a drive. Uh, just a, uh, question, the, uh, Chipotle frequently does a catering business as well, corporate catering. And I presume that the all alcohol does not cover anything, uh, other than on purpose?
Correct. Yeah, we, um, so alcohol will not leave the front doors.
Okay.
Everything has to stay within the, the building. Um, we do have a patio, but it's, there's gonna be a sign that's posted, and we let every customer know they're not allowed to leave, um, the, the four walls with an open beverage. They have to finish up.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Problem?
Yes.
Uh, Maxipina, South Street, I'm just curious what size the beverages are, and whether a customer can order multiple beverages with their meal?
Sure. Um, so two drink, uh, maximum, um, so that's either two beers or two margaritas, we offer Salsa or Patron margaritas, um, with varying price points. The beers are always bottled, not can, um, and the margaritas are in a sixteen ounce, uh, like clear plastic cup, and that's it. We don't offer like shots or anything like that, they have to get a mixed margarita to the recipe, and that's it.
So it's a sixteen ounce, you can get two sixteen ounce beverages for your thirty minute stay?
Yeah, two sixteen ounce beverages, so what is the alcohol va- you know, what, is that one shot?
I, I, I want to say that it is one shot per, um, margarita.
Per margarita?
Yeah.
So, I think I'm, I'm hearing your question is, you know, can you, can you gas up here? Um, and it sounds like you can have, it sounds like it's a two drink kinda thing, that's what, it's, do I have that?
You have to purchase food, yes, so you couldn't.
Yeah, so you purchase food and you're allowed to have two drinks?
Uh, it's a one drink at a time, two drinks during your stay, if you so choose to come back up and get a bag of chips and you wanna order another drink, then we'll allow it, but we don't sell individual.
Got it. And so the maximum is two?
Yes.
And you have to reorder food to get the second?
Correct, unless you're with a, maybe like a, a, a partner or something other, then you can order two.
Right, right.
For them, but it's not, you can't order two for yourself when you sit down.
Yep. Other questions from the public?
And the truth is that we found, I mean, I know it's sort of me just saying this, but we have, they have found, people just don't do that. I mean, not zero percent, but I mean, that's, that's generally not what people are going there to do, you know?
Well.
Um, to gas up, I mean, I don't, I've never heard that phrase before, but, um, I understand it, I understand it, and, um, you know, it's.
Old baseball guy.
Yeah.
You know, we just haven't found that to be, um, the type of thing that people are, are, are trying to do.
Yep.
You know?
Yeah. Well, the good news about every license in Reading is it's annually renewable. So, you know, I mean, that's the beauty of it, so, um, other, is there, are there other questions from the public or from the board?
Move that the Board of Selectmen close the hearing on the application for an all alcohol restaurant liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill, forty six Walkers Brook Drive.
Okay. All, any discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing? Five zero?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for an all alcohol restaurant liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill Colorado LLC. T V A Chipotle Mexico Mexican Grill, forty six Walkers Brook Drive, Reading, for a term expiring December thirty first, two thousand sixteen, said, subject to the following conditions. All bylaws, rules, regulations of the Town of Reading and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the Town Manager or his designated.
Second?
Discussion?
Just one quick question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, Bob, uh, i- if this is granted, how many more do we have left?
I think it's seven, we lost a vendor, right? I think that leaves seven.
We got one, one came back.
Oh, that's right, one came back.
Well, it's in bankruptcy, but it will come back.
Yeah.
All right, that's.
Got it. Um, all those in favor? Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah.
When, when would you expect to start, given?
Uh, so.
Truck's on the way.
Gassing up right now?
Gassing up as we speak.
Not dirty.
Right after the meeting, Heather.
Well, it still goes up to the state, as you know, um, so you guys will send it up there.
Sure.
Yes.
Turn, turn off lighting, what, what is that?
Well, I mean, but, you know, as soon as the state sends it back here and you guys are ready to issue it, you know, once we get it, then, then they'll.
Yeah.
It sounds like you're getting some dinner plans ready.
They'll order.
Might, might, I'm really hungry now, I'm talking about margaritas.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, as soon as, when, when the town makes it available, then, yeah, I mean, I don't think it takes them long to order whatever they need, you know?
No.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, right there.
And so I didn't get all the green cards back yet, I've got a couple of them, but I did mail them off, can I get them back, should I call up and mail them?
Yeah.
Should I send them to anyone in particular?
Um, you can just send them to the office of the Town Manager, it's good.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and we're running a little behind schedule, but CPDC is here.
A little behind.
Jeff, do you need to call yourselves to order, or are you?
Yeah, let's, uh, call this CPDC to order.
Okay.
All right.
Like, to introduce your, uh, your committee?
Sure. Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Jeff Anton, I'm the chairman of the CPDC, I'm joined by Dave Tuttle, Maxipina, John Weston, and that's the four of us tonight, Miss and Karen. Uh, she wasn't able to make it. Uh, but we wanted to take this opportunity to, um, kinda revisit with all of you and, and provide an update on the zoning work that the CPDC has been doing, um, in preparation for November Town Meeting and even beyond. Um, so, what's the best way, is it through this way?
Just nod and I'll.
Okay.
Is this the pointer?
You pointed him, he'll click.
Yeah.
Don't point at the Bob, he'll crash the plane.
There's a slide missing.
What are you looking for?
It's this slide.
Do you have this? Is it on the website?
That's all right, I can kind of pass this around, cause this, yeah, this might be a good way to kind of set the stage. So this is a, this should be a familiar slide.
The show. That's on the website.
Uh, this is the slide that we presented to Town Meeting the last couple of years, or I guess the last couple of go rounds.
Town.
All right, yeah.
And you keep adding columns to it as work gets completed. So this area over here keeps shrinking because luckily.
There it is, right there, it's hidden, slide's hidden, right mouse, unhide.
Oh, it's.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and then if you go full screen with it, would be good.
Unhide slide.
Right, right mouse to slide and unhide it.
There we go.
With no time, did my fingers leave my hand.
So this is really all the work that we've done since the zoning advisory committee came into existence in the late two thousand twelve timeframe. Our first, um, our first article was presented in two thousand thirteen, November of, and most of the items were passed, then we took another series of articles in Sep- uh, September two thousand fourteen. Again, November two thousand fourteen, most recently, November two thousand fifteen, we had the updated purpose, uh, the updated aquifer protection district, uh, the commercial communication structures, and also, uh, we continue to consolidate some definitions. So we've completed a lot of work to get our bylaw simpler, cleaner, easier to use, and more up to date. But there's still some big hit items that we really need to address in the near future. Now, where we came at in November two thousand fifteen, we had a certain set of priorities that we had discussed as a team, as a, as a committee, and, uh, we felt were the right ones to proceed with. And that's that top kind of quadrant right here, this top square. So we had parking, planned residential development, P R D, planned unit development, P U D, and then minor updates. And the minor updates is meant to kind of encapsulate any changes that would arise after we've gotten some traction from using the updated bylaw. But then some things started happening, some facts started being presented to us that made us rethink what our priorities are. And, um, I'll get to, I'll, these are ultimately what our priorities are, but let's talk a little bit about, if you will, my next slide, what those driving factors were that made us rethink it. The number one item was the release of the Economic Development Plan, which really put a lot of emphasis on expanding the downtown growth, or the downtown smart growth district. It focused primarily on the commuter rail station, a lot of the area around Green Street. Um, there was also, um, you know, the desire to, uh, facilitate mixed use in field development, helping Reading meet its economic development goals as well as regional demand. And then also develop and implement a comprehensive parking strategy. This piece, we're, 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 we're less focused on, although that is a big item, and I'll talk about that briefly. Um, but really, this piece right here came, it rang clear to us that we, this was something we needed to, to think about. So that's the first recommendation. The second one came from Town Council. Uh, our signed by law really was out of date, following a Supreme Court ruling, um, that prevented us from limiting content, uh, within the signed by law. Do I, do I have that right?
Can't regulate the content.
So you can't regulate the content, content within our signed by law. Um, so he really recommended that we, we take a look at it and, and get that updated. So these two factors, primarily the downtown car, smart growth district, expanding that, and Town Council's, uh, recommendation made us, gave, it gave us pause to rethink what our priorities are. If you want to go to the next slide. So this is our proposed zoning amendments. Um, I'll start at the top, we've got site plan review and then other amendments. These two kind of fall into that category of, we've got probably six months to a year, maybe a little bit more of using our new bylaw, and, um, we've noticed some areas that need to be refined and tweaked. Uh, so for site plan review, we're amending it to, um, really adjust some of the criteria that we have, so we can capture, uh, some other planning implications that, um, that may have an impact on our butters and things of that sort. We've actually seen situations where there's, um, there's impacts that we really hadn't even considered. Um, and it, and they ended up not even coming before us. So we decided that we, it made sense to review the site plan review criteria and, um, also obviously continue to make it more applicant friendly. We've got other amendments here as well, a number of small items, uh, generally, we're adding pet grooming and allow it by right in certain parts of the town. Uh, this is to contrast with a kennel, uh, cause pet grooming and kennel, we only had kennel in our bylaw. In our table of uses, we felt the need to add pet grooming. A table of accessory uni- uh, uses, uh, to allow parking garages of more, a parking and garaging of more than one commercial vehicle by special permit. Um, special home occupation, parameters for approval, and the accessory buildings and structures. So really small items in the grand scheme of things that, um, came up as feedback that we wanted to address.
What were you thinking of as special home occupations? Were there some examples that fall into that?
It's a good example, I know we've got a few, I'm gonna look to Julie to help with that one.
Sure, so like if, um, right now, we allow someone to have a home occupation, if they're a resident of, um, the house, and they can't have like any employees, not one, um, and they can't have any, if, there can't be any like visible indication that the structures they use for anything besides, um, you know, a single family use. Um, so the special home occupation would allow someone to, to teach music lessons, um, and have, you know, a couple of kids come a couple of times a week, and, you know, they're dropped off and, and there's, it's not, not a huge visible impact. Um, but we're, we've been hearing that, you know, um, the bylaw is kind of limiting because we only allow, um, s- home occupations by residents of the home. So someone can't even have like a, a tech business where they have one guy come and, and help with I T. from the home. Um, and I, I thought personally that if we allowed it by, um, a special permit process, that would give the CPDC leverage to add conditions, to deny it if it's not something that they thinks appropriate. Um, so we have a number of parameters to go along with.
I said, I'm still confused, so if I own the home and I do taxes, say, and I don't have a shingle out front, that's fine.
Yes.
I suppose the same is true if I do music lessons and I own the home and I do piano lessons, gee, which you don't wanna hear me. Um, but you're describing a third party who may not be a resident, may not own the property, but uses it for the purpose of conducting a business, but it's a private home?
So it would be the resident, and then they could have like one employee?
I see, you can add an employee, that's what.
Right. Or they could have something that is a, a little bit of a visual, like, so, a mother comes and drops off her son grab music lesson, so it's a little more traffic than like maybe normally would be generated.
I see, higher intensive use, I see.
Um, but it's, it's nothing, um, excessive.
Well, but like.
It's.
The limits are pretty strict as, as well, there's not as strict as the current bylaw.
Okay. Is there a signage aspect to the special home occupation as well, or is it still no signage?
Um, I mean, that's up to the, to the board, but I, I would say no.
Hmm, okay.
Um, you, typically, it's no visible indication that's being used, uh, right, but.
Or you're up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Julie, what about, um, like a home daycare, where you might have, you know, the owner of the house runs the daycare, six, seven kids get dropped off, and they have, you know, a couple of aides that work with them in the home daycare? Is that, I know that's regulated maybe differently, but what about the, is that in our actual zoning pool, does it address home daycare as a specific use?
It's a separate use and it falls under a separate.
Today.
Yeah, that's got its own, it's, it's whole, so, but, you know, to John's point, somebody's doing taxes and during tax season, they bring a second person in.
Right.
Cause it's taxis.
Right.
Um, and so now you've got an employee that, um, comes in and parks and you need, and what you're saying is now you can make provision for that.
Right, whereas now, if we knew about it, we would have children to stop.
Right.
Um, because we really don't allow for it at all.
This is gonna be fun at Town Meeting.
And a commercial vehicle, it's a vehicle with a commercial plaque, not a vehicle over certain weight or size, true? It's not the vehicle, it's the registration of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a separate regulation for vehicles over ten thousand pounds.
Over ten thousand.
Oh, it's, it's weight, it's weight driven?
There are two, there's, this is separate from the one that regulates the heavy vehicles.
I see.
All right.
Chief?
Um, so we've got sign, uh, site plan review, other amendments, we've got the signed by law, which again, Town Council, uh, recommended strongly that we, uh, we take a hard look at and bring it to.
that we, we take a hard look at and bring it into compliance with the Supreme Court ruling, which prohibits regulating for content. And while we were doing that, there was a big effort to really simplify it, streamline it, add graphics into it. We looked at it last night and it really looks outstanding, especially compared to what we had. I think it's gonna make the users of the bylaw a lot happier, being able to understand what, what our regulations are.
Did you guys roll your own, or did you start with kind of a pure product that you tried to tailor?
We're full euphemisms in this place.
No, we started with our own. I mean, Nick, do you wanna give a kind of a brief update on, he led the work group on that?
We looked at our own and we looked at some model codes that are written up by the, um, the International Municipal Lawyers Association, if that makes any sense, international municipal. Uh, we looked at their model codes and we took some advice from town council and we amended, we changed ours because we felt that that captured everything we wanted. Uh, and then we streamlined that.
Okay.
And these changes are all to bring it into compliance with the read decision.
Yep.
And we've clarified some things. We have not made changes that, that changed the regulation.
Nor do we want to.
I think that's a next step.
Right.
To your point about town meeting, signs can become pretty controversial pretty quickly, so we wanna make that clear.
Get the bylaws fixed first.
This is all about bringing it to compliance, planning it out, and no regulations have been cha, have been changed.
Yeah.
Right, is it strictly a compliance move?
So, you can still.
Yep, I think that's wise.
You can still, you can still regulate size and location and materials, right, but not content?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
Are you trying to bring all this up in November?
Um, well, we'll get to that. Right now, just to give you a little heads up on, we're planning to do site plan review, these other amendments, and the signed bylaw. Downtown zoning, we're gonna recommend to push that until April two thousand seventeen. And we'll explain why in a second.
Yes, Dan.
Uh, very briefly, the changes, it's kind of this overlay of zoning that the state is passing here. How's that gonna affect us? Will that necessitate we pass some bylaw changes?
I guess.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so, we've talked to town council about the pending legislation at the state, and town council has advised us to not even spend any time looking at it, because it's kind of like Groundhog Day. We've been in this movie time and time again.
Yeah, yeah.
And rather than spend a lot of time anticipating what the legislature might do, he said it's best to just wait. Let's see if anything gets passed, and then he'll give us some directive after that.
Do we have a channel for input to this process at all?
Uh, I talked to Senator Lewis a week and a half ago. He indicated it was not gonna pass this session through both bodies, but that the House would undoubtedly pick up where the Senate left off in the next session.
Oh, right, the House. Okay.
And he wants to come in and probably with our two House reps, understand what we've already done, because
Yep.
um, he wasn't aware of the detail. We made some changes and, and just from some of my comments, said you're, you're perhaps more progressive than the bill we're looking at.
Oh.
So, we do need to have a better dialogue. I, I wish that they had reached out to us in the past, but nonetheless,
Right.
it's a year off from being done.
Okay, that's good.
Um, but it, but it could supersede any and all changes we've made. You know, they do have the authority to do that. That's the scary part. So, we definitely wanna drag those three parties in here, and make them know at least what we have and what we intend to change.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, so then the last item is downtown zoning. We wanna build upon the work and the input that was given to us through the economic development plan, planning process. And we also felt that it was important to look beyond just mixed use and consider other zoning mechanisms, such as maybe historic districts or sub-district regulations. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, especially as it applies to the district that was recommended within the economic development plan. So, um.
Are we coming back to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'll spend some time on that. So, these two really came out of the work of, of just getting feedback from people that have used the bylaw. These two came out of recommendations against town council, and this one came out of the economic development plan. This was all vetted, this revised set of priorities was all vetted in a meeting in February two thousand sixteen, a public forum, where we presented it and we really didn't get any pushback whatsoever. People were generally in agreement. They felt that the rationale to reprioritize made sense. Let's move to the next slide. So, on April eleventh, two thousand sixteen, the CPDC organized a public forum. Uh, we had over eighty people attend, and it was really well facilitated, excellent engagement, excellent presentation. And most importantly, there were a number, it was very interactive. There were a number of maps out there at different tables where people could go ahead and indicate in a very structured way what priorities they felt were important as far as zoning goes. We identified five specific areas that we felt could be considered. This area along kind of a butts south main, or this part of Main Street, and then this part of the existing forty R. Uh, we've got Wilburn Street over here. We've got this area along Lincoln Street. Um, so, we looked at all of these areas, which kind of surrounded the existing forty R. And we asked people, what do you think should be our priorities for zoning expansion and, and the like? Um, and generally, what we learned was people felt very strongly about this corridor right here, which brings us from just south of the train tracks all the way up to, is that Wilburn Street? No, not Wilburn Street.
Green.
Green.
Like, Haven Street, yeah, it's Haven Street. So, that was the first area that people felt strongly about. And the second area that they felt strongly about was this corridor right here. I have to be honest, I think a lot of the favoritism towards this group is probably driven by the forty B that's going in right around here. Um, I, I think people were just nervous about that. I don't think that this has a lot of traction just yet. I think there needs to be a little bit more work done with the forty B for people to understand how this could be used. This was an area that was recommended in the economic development plan. We absolutely agree that it's worth considering. However, I talked about kind of sub-district regulations. Throw in a forty, a forty R on top of this area right here is, I don't wanna say risky, but it's, it's a little presumptuous, only because you've got Green Street in here, which is a very, a dense residential area. So, we wanna be careful. We wanna be able to tweak the regulations to account for the fact that you've got a lot of houses very close together. But you also have some areas in this part, like Washington Street and this area over here, that could be purchased up and then built into a nice mixed use center. Yeah, John?
Jeff, I'm curious on that point about that section along High Street there. I assume part of your dialogue was forward-looking planning versus somebody else swooping in and determining what your fate's going to be. Do folks now understand that this is really the more deterministic of outcomes? You can kind of control your own destiny to a greater degree? Are you seeing that they, they don't react so negatively that they might have a couple of years ago?
It was interesting, because we actually had people say,
I wish I had done.
I, I wish, yeah, I wish I had.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he, the opposite was going on when that discussion was happening before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
People really need alternatives. If there's only one thing in the room.
Yeah.
And versus the status quo, they'll always pick status quo, but if it's, they'll say it very badly, the lesser of two evils or the better of two outcomes.
Yeah.
You really have to portray it that way, because we're getting feedback, why didn't we do this earlier? Hey, folks, we tried to do this earlier, right?
That's exactly right.
Well, I, I think it's important to note that whether or not we tried to do it, I mean, we had a, what we, what happened, and this happened a number of years ago, is that there were public hearings similar to the ones that you had, and a few people said, literally, a few people said,
Not here.
We, not here.
Yeah.
And so, rather than think about the greater good of the town, those voices kind of, you know, blew it right out of the water. And as a result, what we ended up with is a forty B that we've been wrangling with for a year. And so, I mean, there are some things to consider. I mean, the area there that's, you know, not red, but, yeah. Um, I mean, if an overlay happens there, that doesn't evict you from your home.
No, 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 absolutely.
I mean, it doesn't do anything like that. I mean, what it does is it actually may create an opportunity that you currently don't have
Yep.
with your home, but it changes nothing to the, to the current homeowner. So, I mean, I, I think we've gotta be, in some cases, bold where we have never been bold in this town.
Sure. I think, um, a couple of points to that. I think people are more open to it now that they've seen what a forty R district can look like. You look at the building that has pomplamoose in it and they're, wow, this is actually really nice and this is very well.
Yeah, and people live upstairs and, you know.
Yeah. And then, um, I, Dave, at, I think at the last meeting that we were all at, and then at the public forum, did a really good job of explaining the fact that this doesn't mean, to your point, John, that we're gonna come in and bulldoze your whole neighborhood.
Right.
Like, this is just another option. It's another option for developers to use to possibly build something that is a little bit more unique, but, um, you know, very, uh, kind of adapts well with the, with its surroundings.
In fact, of anything, we've added values to this one.
Yeah, I, I just gonna say that exact thing. I mean, what you may do by, you know, creating an overlay there is create an opportunity that people there might otherwise never have.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. No, no, absolutely, absolutely. Um, let's, let's go to the next slide. What you'll see is, we're just kind of zooming in on this area right here, because this ultimately becomes the area that we wanna focus in on. So, in the yellow, you've got the existing forty R, and then you kind of round it out here. Um, again, a lot of emphasis on this area. There was a lot of attention there. People felt like that area of Main Street, kind of pulling up the hill as you approach the green, was really ripe for, for this type of development. And in this area, absolutely, I think that they were very interested in that as well, but there were a lot of Green Street residents there that said, like, I, I think I get it, this makes sense, but I just wanna make sure that there's the right protections in place and that we're not gonna just, you know, slap a forty R over it.
Right. Well, the idea of slapping something on it and then people, fear sets in that some, that something's different, and are you gonna, literally, are you gonna bulldoze my house? It's, you know, it really isn't that, you know, at all. And I think it's really important as you, I'm thrilled that you're conducting these hearings and, you know, and I'm so glad to have you all visit us and tell us about it. I think it's really important to be just painfully precise and patient. You know, the idea that you move it out, you know, to annual town meeting instead of squeeze it into November probably gives you that opportunity to, to kind of do what we've been doing recently around the financial issues.
Yeah. And it can, it can help, you can, I don't wanna say tie the two together, but you can point at some of the work that's being done to help address.
It does tie, it does tie them all together. It's kind of a master plan, if you will.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. John, did you have a question?
I did. So, I was also a little surprised that that deep red district didn't continue along the railroad tracks all the way up to the yellow. On, on High Street, is that it?
Oh, the same, yeah?
Yeah. Because there's, there's, um, there are businesses there, but they're all single story, right?
Si- similar businesses to Main Street.
Right.
That's already in the four, the forty R, isn't it?
I don't think so.
Which side of the street?
Washington Street, or I mean, uh.
Uh, the, the northerly side of.
Yeah, I think the two, the, 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 what you don't see in yellow are those apartments, um, the, the couple of apartments there, I think there's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, there's the,
Yeah.
Right in here, we've got basically the, the multifamily.
Yeah.
Right.
With the, the big parking lot in the center. And that's one of the things which is, um, it would be a large redevelopment, but it's probably one of the, the candidates, the, the prime candidates. This area with the small houses, tiny streets, and there's some topography is really challenging for any developer, for any change. If we can, if we can come up with a good alternative opportunities there, I'll be happy, but a little bit surprised. You know, it's a tough nut.
But Dave, that very thing, could I just ask you a question? Because of that, and I, and I think you're really right about that, that it makes it tougher if you think of it as a developer. But by inclu, by being inclusive, um, I think you challenge a developer for a major project similar to what happened really on Haven Street. I mean, and so, um, I, I just think it's some, I don't think you create harm by being inclusive. I think you create opportunity, and nature will take its course. If it doesn't make sense because of the topography and it doesn't make sense because all of those people are very happy with their homes exactly the way they are and would prefer to, you know, then, fine, you know, the, the free market and, and nature will take its course.
Well, the, I mean, the, the town and the residents there have said, you know, talk to me.
Yeah, that actually makes sense that they would say.
So, we have to fix it around something.
This is the one, he's got, and he needs to.
The area here, uh, is, is more interesting, because this is the Washington Street. This is probably the toughest intersection in the entire town.
Yep.
And there's a lot of, of variation here that may or may not present an opportunity. You know, we've got, we've got to do some more investigation in that area.
Yeah.
So, John, I think what you're, the question you had.
Yep.
Um, if you, Washington Street, the yellow ends at Washington Street, so I think it encompasses all those single-story businesses that you're thinking of.
You're thinking, it's anywhere along here?
I think it misses one, but I think that's an apartment house as well. The last building on High Street before it goes yellow to orange, I think that's an apartment, right there. I think that's an apartment house there too.
Yeah.
So, I think you're right.
I think it does.
Okay.
I think it, the forty R is already present in those single-story buildings, single-story businesses that, you know.
Yep. The lesson here for me is that there's a natural tendency for people to just do what's comfortable and what they've always done, and they really need to be presented with an alternative and what might happen in the, but, but for that alternative. And kind of this is really instructive as to what's happened. I'm not sure there's a way to bottle that up, but as you go forward and promote this, there really has to be, you know, if you don't do this, we have more control, you have more authority as a landowner, you have more value add. Um, it can't just be, you are here today and let's talk about what the future might be.
It really, I also think the idea of creating that kind of a, a smart growth district, to John's point, puts the, puts so much more control in the hands of the actual homeowner or property owner and, and the town's influence. Um, I mean, we've, if we haven't woken up in the last year to, you know, what can happen to us. I mean, past development has put us in a position where the, the numerator and denominator around affordable housing is varies. It's more skewed than ever. Um, and so, as a result of that, all steps that, the steps you guys are taking, I think, is critically important to the whole strategic future of, of Reading. I mean, economic, whether it's from economic development to, um, you know, how to, how to manage operating budgets to how to encourage the right kind of growth. I mean, you, you, this is really, I, I think, a very important step you guys are in the middle of right now. We just need to really vet it so that, you know, we think about the greater good of how the town develops.
Oh, that's, that's humbling. Thank you. Um, and let's talk about next steps. Before to the next slide, let, I'm gonna skip over the first. Let's talk about downtown zoning, because obviously, that's, that's the topic that's, that's nearest and dearest to us right now. So, as of right now, um, actually, you know what? Let's, let's go to the next slide. As of right now, um, we, we've got a lot of feedback from the town, from town citizens on what their preferences are for, for the zoning and whatnot. We have obviously a presentation tonight. We've got another presentation on the twenty-eighth with the business community. And then, we would definitely like to conduct, if you would be open to it, a joint CPDC Board of Selectmen meeting sometime this summer. And we would almost see it as, as coming back with the same audience. Obviously, everyone else would be welcome to it. But kind of following up on all of that feedback that was collected and sit down with them and kind of review with them. This is what was provided to us. Now, let's get a little bit more, let's get a little closer to this and understand what the opportunities are. I think a big element to it is kind of giving some visuals of what Main Street coming up into the town center would look like if some forty R projects were built. And kind of work with the citizens so they can get over any fears that they might have and get a little bit more visual into what the possibilities are. So, that's what we would like to do. And then, one of the, another reason why, not only do we wanna push it out because we wanna keep having that conversation, we also almost need to push it out because the DHCD timeline to review and approve our applications is, is extensive. Um, I'm forgetting.
Also, something with a no.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a wild card.
Yep.
Two months, three months. So, we felt like if we tried to get it in for November, we would be, we could be at risk of having to pull it.
Yeah. Next week, you, you said, you guys are, according to that meeting with the business community, is that, um, is that the chamber or is that just an ad hoc group?
Uh, yeah, we did a mailing to, we have a database of over two hundred businesses, so we did a mailing to that database. We did some internal cross-checks with, uh, Public Health and some other divisions and, uh, Public Services, so, um, we, but we are collaborating with the chamber. And so, the chambers agreed to do an email blast. I don't know, not yet, I I don't think it has, um, but.
No, but I think that they have already, you know, they're beating the drum about that, um, I, now, is that gonna be in Reading Cooperative?
They're on board, yeah. Reading Cooperative Bank, five to six thirty today.
It's it's an early evening meet and greet, basically, they had one, I've forgotten exactly what it was, it was a couple of years ago, that was very useful.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I I actually attended that one and it was really v- very well done, I think that's a good idea.
We're aiming for the same kind of thing with a little bit more
Yep.
kind of information upfront.
And we didn't even ask for RSVPs because we want people to feel casual and if they can go, great, if they can't, no problem, um, so we don't even, we're not even keeping track of who's coming, who isn't coming.
It's so different from trying to organize a seven o'clock nighttime government meeting, I mean, I think that's a wise choice.
It's not what it's meant to be.
Yeah, I think it'll be well attended. I think these are exactly, these are probably the exact folks that you wanna hear from regarding these these proposed overlay districts.
And we have a survey.
And you.
These are the folks that would be most helped, quite frankly, uh, if, you know, if in the grand scheme of things, we can create an environment that actually, uh, the business community embraces and utilizes.
I I would even suggest that the, um, the you let the MAPC know and, you know, encourage them to invite people
Sure.
who might be considering running. Uh, I I mean, you know, I mean, it's something to think about, um.
Let's
Go ahead, Jeff.
Let's go back to the previous slide, I'm sorry.
Dan, did you have a question before you moved on?
I wondered if Bob could interject when our our planner person is coming on board, how's that playing to this?
I don't know, for some time, I asked him, there's a couple of months, I should say.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this, so, um, this is the status of our
Jeff, back up for a second, the, me, the, you noticed the seventh, the eleventh and the twenty, uh, the, yeah, here we go.
Yeah.
So is this the time that you intend to have us meet jointly as we have done before and as we are right now?
No, we don't really have a date set for that, I think when when we talked about it, we were thinking the au- sometime in August.
Okay.
Late July.
Uh, and realizing that there's a number of other
There there will be a collision of things happening as you're well aware.
Yeah, exactly, so we need to be careful when we time that for.
Or a joint meeting of several boards.
Yeah.
So, this is all about, th- this is all around public hearings, so site plan review and the minor amendments that we discussed earlier, all of those are in final draft form.
Could I, could I have to bring dinner along with us?
Um, and we have hearings scheduled for those on July eleventh. The signed bylaw is in draft form, but it's very close, in fact, I think we've got just a few more tweaks that we made last night. Um, we're gonna meet again, I talked about the twenty eighth with the business community, and then we have a pl- public hearing scheduled for July twenty fifth on that. Um, and then downtown zoning, as I mentioned, we've got a lot of good feedback, uh, we're gonna keep discussing it in in our sessions and, um, if we can agree on a date and time to have a joint meeting, pick up where we left off after we collected all that feedback and help people get a little bit more visual and realize that it's an option, it's more flexibility and it's really in their best interest, not just personally, but for the town, to to look at these items.
Yeah, and I'll I'll make sure I can attend as many of these as I can, speaking as a realtor, you are gonna increase their property value. You're gonna make their, it's a more desirable, um, outcome, I think, for everybody a- as a result of that.
You know, that's an element, Kevin, that if you could distill that into a slide or two, that could be included from the perspective of somebody in the business, that's got huge credibility, cuz we can all say it, but somebody who does it knows it cold.
Yeah, I I can probably pull it up where it's happened in other communities.
I'm not talking about dollars and cents, but even if it's just direction.
I was talking about dollars and cents.
Yeah.
But, yeah, even just in theory, yeah.
But the important thing is that that's a, that becomes a homeowner option, not a homeowner requirement.
Yeah.
And I think, look.
Puts another tool in the belt.
I mean, nobody wants to be told what to do, I, you know, nobody gets that better than me, I mean, um, it's probably why I sit here now. Um, but, I, so I think it is important that you talk about that in terms of a nice option, you know, I mean, it, but nobody's being, you know, forced into anything, so.
Well, it's unfortunately, we can't wave a magic wand and make the parking issue go away.
No.
But the, uh, it's not something that we have to to be conscious of every step of the way.
The beauty of a forty R though, an overlay, is now suddenly you can have some ma- some internal controls, you, I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, it actually, it puts you back in position to make certain e- either variances or requirements, I mean, you know, you're you're in a stronger position to do that.
It brings the the design guidelines into play, which is one of the key things we're looking for.
It also brings the outside market to you to try to tell you what to do instead of you need to figure it out.
Yes, Bob.
That's the big, that's the big so what.
Exactly, that, that, you mean, th-
That's really gotta be the headline.
The market forces are so important in this discussion that.
Dylan, that's, that's really what we wanted to cover today.
Sure.
I'm gonna take any more questions?
Jeff, just, just one last one, it's really hard here because you're both trying to grow and expand and clarify, at the same time, you're trying to simplicate and remove what's not working. And you think you're striking the right balance where you're able to pull out what's not working, feel comfortable with pulling it out, and, uh.
So far, yes.
I think we have, yeah, I mean, honestly, I talk about the the m- the small changes that we're needing to make, the tweaks following use of the bylaw, tha- after the changes that we've made,
Okay.
it's not a lot of changes, and they're pretty straightforward.
I, just be ready for the ride in November.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And and the other thing I, that I, that I would recommend is just, you know, I mean, there's no such thing as just, uh, uh, we're just l- doing a little tweak of the bylaw, uh, tha- that could be,
Yeah.
you know, a little tweak could be two nights on one, you know, one section, so.
Remember bees and chickens.
Right.
So my recommendation would be is to figure out a way, you know, to basically condense what's really kinda technical kinda language into sort of, this is what we're trying to do.
Mm-huh.
Right, and and sorta, you know, I'm not saying lead people, but, you know, get less of the wordsmithing and more of, this is what it used to do and this is the intent, and this language in front of you gets to the intent, and a way to to kinda, and that's the hardest thing, is to simplify complicated, when especially everybody has their own opinion and experiences. Um, a- and that's the only way, cuz I, so Bob, what'd you say, it's gonna be like four or five nights at town meeting?
I think we reserved it for eight nights.
For eight nights?
Right, it, it, I, it's, could be a barn burner, I I I'm telling you, buckle up for November, there's a lot going on.
Cause there's other things.
Yeah, and and right, that's not the only thing that's on there, but just, you know, to figure out, you know, spend some time sort of figuring out a a presentation that, you know, gets, you know, folks to kinda, you know, to to simplify, that's all I can kinda recommend, because otherwise it gets bogged down and.
That's really good advice, you know, I mean, you can prepare, you guys are, I I would just wanna compliment you because I think you've done in here what Barry's asking for, I I think, you know, that it's good advice, continue doing what you're doing the way you're doing it. It will have smoother sledding as you move through, you know, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty odd people who are gonna all have various opinions about, you know, how you've cons- how you fragmented the sentences.
Sure.
Um, so, um.
Yeah, and, you know, before we
Well, some of, some of it is, is presentation, I mean, some of it is avoiding the red flags.
Yes, okay. Yeah, absolutely.
And it's, you know, I've I've been through ten years of town meetings plus now, so.
Yeah.
The, uh, and I've been on both sides of the issues on some occasions.
But you know, wouldn't you agree, Dave, that it's not, it's not about not being, it's not about not putting a red flag out, it's about changing its color so that it's transparent and easier to understand, I I think it's not about not putting all the information out there, cuz I've listened to you talk about, I've, you know, clarify information often.
Well, the the trick is to make sure that you don't accidentally leave something out.
Yes.
Mm.
You have to be upfront and complete, and we've we've missed that on a couple of occasions and it bites back.
Yeah, good preparation, I think we'll avoid that. Um, so will we hear back from you about your proposal to get together in late July, early August?
That would be good.
Yeah, I would say that it it, just thinking out loud, the earlier in August that we could do that, better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't you think, Bob, because I think as we move towards the end of the summer?
Our place is.
Yeah, I mean, it's
Well, I think you've also just had three public meetings where there was a whole new section of the town that's interested in this topic broadly, that wasn't interested in even two years ago.
It's true.
I will tell you, there are people that did not come to your meeting who would have suddenly, they came to listening sessions for us to talk about operating budgets. And you'd be amazed how much discussion came up about economic development. I I mean, it was just, it was a huge driver in in all of the discussions, um, so.
And just in ending, I just wanted to, um, thank the committee and the planning staff for all the work that you've put in the last, what, two and a half years or so. Uh, you you've had a lot of weight that you've been carrying and, uh, it's greatly appreciated, it's a, it's a lot of work to get through to all this and and don't think that goes, um, without being noticed, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thanks, guys.
Any other questions? Thanks.
The opportunity.
Yep.
Thanks, you.
We'll see you again soon.
Okay, it must be eight forty-five now.
It must be eight forty-five.
Yeah, so our, Brad is pacing in the, uh.
Okay, I see, Brad is pacing and peeking and, you know.
Someone can tell Brad he's on.
Yep.
Second, we gotta adjourn, as a favor.
Okay.
All right, nice.
Closed up the night, thank you.
Night.
The other night, we didn't adjourn officially, but we effectively adjourned one.
No, we did, we did.
We did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we tried to catch him, but it was, it was a two to, it was a two zero vote.
We, um, we voted. Yeah, that's two zero.
Doesn't matter.
I walked out, it's over. Good evening. Good evening, sorry for the late.
Sorry we're delayed.
Over the ops of the emergency.
Some exciting talk about margaritas, though.
Margaritas and no parking zones.
We can't serve them for you.
So, you guys are here to visit and talk about, um, one seventy-two Wilburn Street?
Yes, we are.
Floor's yours.
Where's best place to start, right here?
Actually, um.
That's, not it.
It's Chipotle.
That's okay.
Oh, sorry, I can't see.
Get margaritas on the line.
If you have a thumb drive, that is best.
Polte is, uh, they're down there serving margaritas right now.
Better not be. Better not be.
Might be drinking them then, I don't know.
I think it's five H five, if you wanna get to.
Okay, let me, yeah, let me just try to find it here.
Drive down a bit more.
Yeah.
There you go.
Ooh, I think I missed someone on board.
Next slide, right after that.
Right there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Just in case.
I actually think we've got some, uh, material that are.
That could be a challenge.
I think you sent us some from last week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Copy, too.
Well, Mike Sullivan is here, I knew we met with you before.
Yes.
Mike's the consultant, and Mike Jacobs, who's the affordable housing consultant, he's been in the office.
Hey, hey, Mr. Jacobs.
Yep.
Does a great deal of this, highly regarded by mass housing. Um, and basically, uh, when we appeared before you, previously we advised that we were looking to have twenty, uh, units, uh, placed in the property. Uh, we, and you said to us, please go and meet with the neighbors, could be done. Uh, right afterwards, Mike wrote to all the neighbors, gave his home phone number, or cell number, and he said, if you'd like to talk about it, here's what I'm trying to do, give me a call, got people calling, we got into a dialogue with them. After that, we then had a meeting, uh, it was at the, uh, the rectory, I assume, at the parish center at the church, invited all the neighbors who were, uh, bought in the property and and across the street. Uh, we had about thirty-five people in attendance, very cautious, of our understanding, he gave us a lot of good information about their concerns. And so the product we have now is a result of that input as well, so that was, that was good advice. Uh, basically, I'd like to go through an outline for you, uh, at this point, right now, you you see the traffic flows, um, that take place here. The retaining wall is over in this area, it's very narrow, come here if you can view the site, there's also a a stairwell down here, so it's very restrictive. Uh, so in discussions that we had with the fire chiefs, they wanted to outwiden, uh, so this plan actually moves that retaining wall in a westy direction to widen the entranceway and make it more usable and meet the fire department's sta- uh, standards.
Do you know how many feet you're moving it?
It's eighteen feet, I think it's probably moving about maybe six or eight feet in some areas, uh, and the wall height varies, the highest point is about six to seven feet. Uh, at that point, it's a structural wall, so the rebuilding front and there's attractive fencing that's gonna go on top of that wall, uh, out of concern of anyone falling off the wall. Uh, so that's what's being done in this area, uh, we also heard that the neighbors down here on Wenda had some problems, historical problems with water. Um, and we know that there is a, uh, an old large water line or drainage line that runs behind Parker, comes o- a wetland back that runs through here, crosses Prescott and unloads the Washington Park. So basically, there is a, uh, a manhole here that services, and it's one up in this area, that has serviced this particular area, but apparently it's not adequate capacity. And so what can happen in a serious storm with the goof runoff and all this impervious area, it has to some extent sheeded over a little bit to these houses. Now, I understand from, uh, Father Rock that it's been, that's been solved, but the people are still very nervous about it, so that was an issue that they raised. So as a consequence of that, you're proposing certain things. First is, and I'm filling in for the, uh, project engineer who's on his honeymoon, had the audacity to get married, who's not here tonight, whatever you said that. So he designed this so that the runoff now is all being captured in a leaching area, so the recharge to the ground will not run off site in that regard, so that's one major change to help them. Uh, secondly, these parking spaces are pervious pavement, so that allows a recharge in that area as well. And the third change, this is now near the, uh, the catch basin, is now a small rain garden, uh, to help to begin, uh, the the runoff as best we can. So while we're not, our project doesn't increase, in fact, it decreases the, uh, impervious area, we are trying to address those issues to at least help if we can at least be neutral as far as the neighbors are concerned. Uh, in addition, of course, the neighbors were concerned about, uh, some screening, and so as a consequence, uh, we put in this plan, a fencing that would run along the site. Uh, we think that's attractive, and as we go through, if we get to ZBA, uh, they'll probably give us input, but it seems to us that might be an attractive way to screen the neighbors, plus, uh, landscape.
And that's on top of the already six or eight foot retaining wall on the west side?
On top of the retaining wall, and also down through here, uh, perimeter as well.
That's different.
There there is like chain link down there in some areas, and some areas have other kinds of fencing.
So you're gonna put the more of the stock eight fence across the bottom and and up the other side of the neighbors?
Yes. That's correct.
Yep.
Just to try and give some, uh, screening for the air benefit. The other item that we heard was, where's the dumpster gonna be, and at one point it was down here. What we have done is we have actually recessed the dumpster into that, uh, wall, so what you have is, if you bend it, is up, it goes up, uh, probably fifteen feet between the lower parking lot here and the church lot.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So they're gonna cut into this bank right next to an existing stairway and actually have the dumpster be recessed with doors in front, so it's gonna be totally encased or almost underground.
In its own cave.
Right.
Hmm.
So that's the, that's what we thought was a good way to address that particular issue. Other things, of course, that we discussed before, that we tried to enhance, is the the appearance of the building, the building, of course, is an institution, it was constructed as an institution. One good feature, of course, is we do have a peak roof, which is a, which is a nice feature, so that's gonna obviously be preserved as a slate roof. Um, but what's happened is all the windows are being changed from school type windows to residential windows. And it, could we, I'll go back to the, uh, presentation drawing, the colored one?
I have no idea.
Back up one slide.
It's it's wonderful.
This is at this one?
Okay, yeah, it's kinda hard to see.
So everyone turn your head sideways.
But we're putting a portico on the front.
View.
Uh, again, to make it more residential.
View rotate.
There are no windows in the front now, we have, there are no windows in the car.
Take a chance, oh, that was so lucky.
Not right there.
Perfect. So they're 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 putting windows in, again, in the front, extensive landscaping in the front area, we submitted, I think, with a, a package, maybe a supplemental submitted, shows the actual nature of the, uh, the species that would be there for planning. Uh, this one, and I, this is an ongoing process, this one shows a stairway here and a stairway on the other, or exit on the other side, but we have to have a handicap ramp, ramp on it as well. This is actually gonna be eliminated, because we don't need a stairway on both sides of that entranceway, and frankly, that lets us have more pervious area, get rid of one of the walkways on that side. So that's a further refinement, but that's substantially what is being proposed here.
And there'll be a ramp on the other side?
Yeah, the ramp, the ramp comes down and zigzags and ends down here, and then it's a grade to go right out there, uh, to that side.
Yep.
And and in that view, that front wall wa- walk, uh, wall is right on the sidewalk, I presume, that that is the street we're looking at, in that view, yeah.
It's the street, the street here.
That's the sidewalk in front of it.
Sidewalk here, and that's exit and entrance.
I remember one of the issues was, um, uh, snow, and that, you know, plowing, plowing the back.
Good boy.
And I think it was gonna be sort of kinda tucked in the corner there, but that's now where, that where your rain garden is, and then also, um, you'll lose some parking spaces as that melts and refreezes, so.
Right.
Correct. Correct.
Is there any, um, effort to move snow off site, or?
There is, there is, yeah, and in a, a storm of a certain intensity where we can't safely put it on the site, uh, the applicant understands he's gonna have to. Yeah, and in a storm of a certain intensity where we can't safely put it on the site, the applicant understands he's gonna have to move it. And that could be a condition, of course, of any concrete improvement. But that, you're right, that was something that we did feel we had to address.
The only storage area on site is that rain garden, is that true? That's the only other store, only area you have?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, and I think, there's an elevator.
Yeah.
The main entrance is, of course, for the occupants will be the back of the building, when they park and back, they can enter there and go right up the elevator. One of the units is gonna be universally accessible for handicap. The unit mix is going to be nine two family, nine, excuse me, nine one bedroom, nine two bedroom, and two three bedroom, and the state law requires it to be three bedrooms, we don't.
Nine two, nine one, and what?
And, and two three bedrooms.
That's gonna minimize the impact on schools, but.
And what percentage is affordable?
Twenty-five percent, so five minutes would be affordable, but because of the nature of the use being an apartment, a hundred percent will count towards the town's affordable housing investment.
Right.
I think those are the major points, and Mike can answer any questions you may have on the affordable housing aspect, or Mike Sullivan can answer any particular question you have for the project. But our hope is that you'll feel sufficiently comfortable, so that we can go forward, and looking for your endorsement, at least, the feeling it's a worthwhile project. And Mike has already met with the Mass Housing, and they plan to file with them, probably what, the numbers is it? Pretty short.
Is the building today a three-story building, as it stands today?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a lower level first, yes, it is three stories.
Okay.
What, what happened was, there was a gymnastics academy there, and what they did is they actually removed one of the floors in this portion inside, so that's gonna have to be rebuilt.
Yeah, Dan.
Could you talk about the detail of the merged entrance now, you're reversing the flow around the building?
Right.
Correct? How are those gonna come together and what's the nature of the detail there?
The, the feeling of the church, and the church influenced this, is that they, they have, of course, parishioners who are elderly, and they wanted to make sure, at first we talked about coming in this way, for both this project and for the church. The church's concern was there's a rise on their site, and they felt that some of their parishioners were not very comfortable driving out that area. And as a consequence, the discussion was, well, as long as we have them consistent, let's consider it going out in this direction as an exit. In addition, the thing we heard we reversed it, was people were concerned with the headlights. That they, in this case, they'd come and then shine over these houses, and these people had concern, as did the people on this side of the church with the reverse direction. So, this way keeps the flow the same as it is now on the church, and reverses the flow here. And the idea here will be, obviously, to have signage, to make sure the confluence of that traffic is appropriate. And of course, we have a traffic engineer, by the way, who's gonna be assisting us with the traffic accounts for his own board of appeals process. And I should mention parking is on the side.
So, there, there'll be a double curb cut now, there won't be a crossover like there is now? Into the single curb cut?
Right now, it shows it's one, maybe wider. As far as parking is concerned, the ready zoning ballot requires one point five for each year. I know the town's faced with some others going much fewer than that, this is actually gonna exceed the ready zoning requirement. So, instead, that would require thirty parking spaces, we're proposing thirty-five here. The church has a certain number that we brought in on this plan to show them, but we know the church is not gonna use those a great period of time. They'll need them on Sunday and certainly religious holidays and so forth, but we believe that we can work out some arrangement with the church, and they're not, and they're not involved in that to maybe use those for certain guest parking. But, that's gonna be worked out with the church, but, anyway, we tried to dedicate or show which spaces are going toward particular needs.
They'll be assigned to the apartments, will it, will it be assigned parking? Is that the plan?
I'm sorry?
Will it be assigned, so in other words?
Oh, yes.
That means, do I get number twenty-two and, you know?
Exactly. And Reverend Martin is the church, so that the, and Mike runs a tight ship, so he'll make sure that his occupants do not have to buy the church parking space.
And Mike, is it your current plan to maintain this as a, as a landlord?
It is, yes.
I mean, I realize, you know, things change, but, you know, that does sound like, I thought originally.
Yeah. Hundred percent.
Questions from the board?
What would you describe the tenor of the meetings as you brought forth some of the improvements? I mean, I kind of, this is all subjective and based on your memory, we all view meetings differently, can you characterize what the consensus was, if there was one?
Well, first of all, they were very cautious, and they listened to us, and they, they made comments, and the only thing that I really heard was the, was the issue of the drainage. And I had a nice conversation with the owner right down here, in fact, my wife happens to know her, and she was very nice, and just she wanted to see what we could do to help her. And I think what Mike was doing was everything possible to help her. I didn't hear anyone just saying, oh, we don't want that, that's crazy, don't do that, um, it wasn't that kind of environment. I'm not sure if you've heard from anybody.
Not for a while, no.
That's generally a good sign.
I thought to me.
And there's nobody here.
I ju, you're just saying, you know, I mean, um, 'cause other, at other times, we'd hear a lot. So, I think that that's, no news is good news, actually. When are you scheduled, you scheduled with the ZBA soon?
What we have to do is, Mike has to file, and we have to get a site approval letter.
Yeah.
From Mass Housing.
Right.
Which will be done as soon as he's able to do that. We wanna get the play of the board first, and then apply, it was like this is the friendly forty B process.
Yeah.
And then you'll apply, only if they'll take.
So, so what would happen, our goal is to try and apply by the end of the month. They would then send out a letter to the, we would apply, not patient come into the town, co-terminus lead with Massachusetts Housing Partnership. They would send out a thirty day comment letter to the town, they would be ordering a land appraisal as well. That process typically takes about two months or so before they would issue a project eligibility letter. Then we would, you know, finish our traffic study, and so it'd probably be about, uh, three months before we would submit to the zoning board.
So, Mike, do you have it under con, have you taken ownership of now?
No, not.
Under contract, it's all pending approvals and.
Correct, yes.
Now, isn't there a, somebody's, Bob, maybe you can refresh me, isn't there a way that you could apply with a certain title towards a forty B that's one different from there that you asked?
Well, I was gonna ask, just to clarify, when you said friendly forty B, you're not asking for a LIP.
No, it's not a LIP proposal, it's a.
Okay. So, friendly is just a word?
Yeah, friendly is just a word, meaning of that.
Not a legal term.
I know that there was another term, you know?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And you've chosen not to do that because?
We're, we're, we're applying to Massachusetts Housing Partnership for a couple of reasons. One, um, they work much better with small developers. Two, they have a particular financing program with a sort of longer term in amortization, which works better with small programs.
Right.
Three, the LIP has certain design standards in terms of the square footage, which, because this is an adaptive reuse of a building, those square footages don't quite work with the LIPs. That's why.
So, you know, you have to be working from scratch a little bit more than you are now, 'cause you're working with the building.
Yeah, so that's why the LIP just didn't quite work for us.
Mike, what's the square footage of the units roughly?
I don't know if you have it scoped out, you have it?
The one bedrooms are like seven fifty, no, six, most, a lot of them are six ninety, which is the problem, the LIP standard is seven, is seven hundred, so we're just, we're just a little below that. The two bedrooms are, uh, nine fifty, the two bedrooms are in the nine fifty range, and then the three bedrooms are.
Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred, yeah.
The, um, the heating of the property is natural gas or oil?
Right now, it's oil, but we're considering natural gas or electric right now, not oil.
So, if, if you did leave it as oil, you'd need to manage deliveries as well, in U S D I, so, yeah?
Correct. It will definitely not be oil, it's just, we're, it'll be an energy star system, it'll either be a gas or, or a high efficiency electric system.
So, you're here to, to show us, which I appreciate, I mean, I, you know, it's really good to see, you know, what you're doing, I, I, I think you're, personally think your process has been a good one. When we asked you to go visit the neighbors, you've done that. What is it that you're really looking for from us? Is this, is this a friendly visit to, you know, encourage the?
What we're looking for, at least the consensus, to hopefully that the selectmen believe that the proposed plan is workable and could be welcomed in, in the town.
Yeah.
As a reuse of existing, existing building.
And so, but, I mean, of course, you realize, I mean, you're gonna have a hearing with the ZBA, that's not us.
Right.
Uh, I mean, you know, you're following your process with Mass Housing, and that certainly all makes sense. I, personally, I, I like the use of this, but that's just me personally looking at it, thinking that suddenly we have a building that's not being, not being used at all, that suddenly, you know, people are living in, and, and its application to our affordable housing challenge i- is very helpful, in my opinion. I, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but, and I don't know that this requires some kind of a vote of resolution, but generally speaking, that's my personal opinion.
I appreciate that. The context would be that when the site, when the Mass Housing Partnership corresponds with the town, the town has an opportunity to comment. And knowing that the, or the selectmen are opposed to the project is, is important to us.
Yep.
Mike, you talked, asked the question about its contract relationship, and it gets expensive to go through the process, not just for the plans and so forth, you see, but also in contract extensions. And so, we're trying to feel that we're not gonna get to a position where the selectmen say, we don't like what you're doing somewhere down the road, so that's what we're trying to communicate, having the context of friendly and so.
Yes, John.
I mean, the most important opinions aren't in the room, it's, I really would like to hear from the neighbors myself, to make sure all is well. This looks like you've listened carefully and taken a number of positive steps, it looks attractive, it looks like you've dealt with traffic problems. But at the end of the day, it's what, we're kind of the minimum fish in game, I really wanna hear what the neighborhood says through the ZBA process. I'm supportive of this in its current form, but again, we'd wanna hear that.
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, as, as we've done for the last two forty Bs that have come through town, one is still active. You know, there'll be a formal application, we have thirty days to comment, I'll wanna know the import of staff, the fire chief, the police chief, the fire department board of health.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, that'll play a key role, nothing to say that your opinions don't matter either, because a lot of people.
No. But they kinda don't matter, really, I mean, we, you know.
They kinda don't. You know, 'cause ZBA, that's definitely them.
Other than personally speaking.
Right.
I mean, it sounds like.
You know, I'll reflect the comment of everyone.
Yeah.
Anyone, so anyone that wants to make a individual comment, please send it to me.
I know when we did the first cut, you know, we sent you back and directed you to talk to the neighbors and come back with, you know, improvements based on those conversations, on its face, it looks like you've done that, and.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it looks like you've done that with the, with the fire chief as well.
So, that's, I mean, that's great.
Yeah, and I assume that'll come through in all the comments, so.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, my, my general take on it is, you know, it's a building that, that was gonna be reused, you know, so now you're taking it and you're, you're improving the site. To, you know, the fencing actually is a very nice stockade fencing, you know, trees that are gonna be up and around that for even further screening, but it looks like on the plans, they're correct. You know, so from the neighbor's standpoint, you know, that, that would be a drastic improvement over the current site, as right now, so, you know, I'd agree with Bob, you know. At this point, I'd say, this is, you know, this is great, I think you guys have acted as a, as a quote-unquote friendly, you know, forty B project moving forward. Listening to, as John Arena mentioned, listening to, hearing from the, the butters, and definitely hearing from the parking heads would be a big role in continuing that, making sure that it is a, could be a good project.
Yes, Dan.
I agree with everything that's been said, I also understand that the parking split between the church and this building has been worked out many, over many, many months with the ZBA. In fact, this started when the building was originally planned for reuse, uh, for the school, so, uh, there's, there's been a lot of water over the dam on that subject, and I think an equitable plan is gonna come up with. So, I, it's a great project.
Yeah, and really, I mean, I'm glad you came to visit us.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear about this project. Honestly, I don't, I mean, our opinion will be heard, but the important ones are not ours. And I think John Arena makes the great point that it sounds like you've taken the steps with the butters, because those are the ones that, you know, are the most important. Because therein will lie your support, you know, or your detractors. And, you know, Mike, what you're doing, what, I mean, over the years, I've owned rental property many times, and being friends with all the neighbors of the rental property was the most important thing I ever did, and it sounds like you're already taking those steps. So, I, it seems to me like you're on the right path here. I'm, I'm hearing a general consensus from everybody up here that we're kind of excited about, you know, the progress. Sounds like you're doing the things that we would hope you would do, to make it that friendly thing, that, you know, that adjective that everybody seems to like to put in the front of it.
Well, we appreciate your time and your comments, and if there's anything you want us to do, but way of communicating with the neighbors, let us know.
Thank you.
They say that we're thirty-five in attendance, more or less.
That's good, that's great.
It went well.
I just stay in touch with them all the time, I, I would just let that be a non-stop kinda, you know, here's where we are, this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
People love information.
Have you distributed this plan to the, to the butters? This, this now finished?
They, they had an earlier version, and I'll tell you what the difference was, the difference was that the wall hadn't, this wall hadn't been moved.
Yeah.
And that was a fire chief comment afterwards, the dumpster was over here, on the plan they saw. Other than that, it was substantially the same plane as far as the site.
To John's point, I mean, I, I'm sure these full-size, decised schematics aren't expen, aren't cheap, but if you printed up thirty-five of those on a, a printer, and distributed them to the neighborhood, and just did over-communicate, it goes a long way to deliver it.
I'd be having a cookout in the parking lot this summer.
Yeah.
That's just me, though.
Bring in a jumpy house, you know.
All right, good, thank you very much, I thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming out, I appreciate it.
Next.
Uh, do we have a debt sale? That we've spoken about.
Yeah, you have a very long motion, unfortunately.
God saw that.
Um, but there will be no signatures tonight, I'll need to ask you to come in separately to do that.
Right.
We still have to produce the paperwork, it'll probably be next week.
Bob, can you explain the concept of the total interest cost, there's two or more components that roll into the total cost of debt?
Um.
Is there a premium, return of premium?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it's a little misleading, on page four of tonight's packet, I promise not to spend a lot of time on this. You see the two thousand sixteen maturity, seven hundred and five thousand, three percent interest rate?
Yes.
There's a very high premium on that, so someone, and I don't remember what it is, someone is paying a hundred and seven dollars to get a hundred dollars back next November, and enjoy a three percent interest rate. The yield on that is zero point four percent. So, the long and short of it is, there's lots of different buyers in the marketplace with lots of different motivations. Some people buy coupon, and they're willing to lose principal in order to get coupon, doesn't matter why, that's just what they do.
They want, they want the surety.
So, they're getting a three percent interest rate, and they're losing, you know, seventy percent.
Giving up principal to do it.
Yeah, uh, over a short period of time. So, you know, one of the things I noted was, a hundred thousand of that seven hundred and five thousand is the birch metal lighting project. The interest cost for that, I think, was a thousand dollars and twenty-five, uh, thousand twenty-five dollars.
Thousand twenty-five dollars, yeah.
So, that's the time value of money for six months or whatever it is. So, the interest rates here, I, you know, the interest rates are what they are, but the net interest cost, or the total interest cost, you can look at it two ways that are very similar. Is zero point four percent on the shorter maturity and about one and a half on that longest one, one point six, and you don't see that anywhere in the document. And the average, you know, the weighted average is the one point two six that the chairman measured.
So, basically, we're selling, we're selling bonds at different maturities, we're not selling.
Yes, you're selling the longest ones, I think the two thousand twenty-six and seven are just water, and those had a cost of, in the ballpark, a one point six five percent interest. True interest cost, including the premium.
Right. But, and when you're selling a bond, most people are getting their money back, if they hold it to maturity.
Well, they'll, they'll get par back, but in, in this case, because they're interest, they're coupon buyers, they're paying more than par for it.
Right.
Some of them are paying nine and ten bucks, so, you know, if they're gonna get a hundred dollars back, they're paying us a hundred and ten.
Right, but they're getting the interest along.
And they're getting a higher amount of interest, because they know they're gonna lose principal.
Right. And they're doing that because they're relying on income.
Well, and they're municipal bonds on top of that, so they've got.
So, they're double tax free.
You know, they're, they're selling income, and they don't care about principal value.
Right.
A lot of people that live on municipal or tax-exempt income truly don't care about principal, as long as they get par back.
Right.
Right.
They're just living on the income.
And they have to hold it to maturity.
Right.
Well, but, yeah, 'cause all they're doing is spend, they're clipping coupons and they're living on that, so.
Right. It's a while to wrap your head around that. Yeah, well, from being in the bond markets, I quickly realized there's lots of different motivations. As opposed to people that just don't know what they're doing, they just have different motivations.
I mean, it's still.
Especially when they start paying negative interest rates, I was kinda hoping for that, but it didn't happen. But there's a lot of that around the world right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Especially in Europe.
I mean, there's still, there's no, if people, if.
Put the money in your mattress.
You put it in the bank, or in the mattress, you get zero. If you put it.
Better than the bank.
If it's still there.
If you put it in the stock market, you, you risk losing your principal.
Yeah.
Whereas here, you're getting income, so.
Yeah.
Tax-free.
A dollar sixteen to get a dollar back, that's amazing.
It's the double barrel implication of the taxes, that's what's going on.
Yeah.
You got.
Yeah, you're getting tax-free interest.
You get, you get tax-free interest. And so, for the right buyer, it's, you know, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer, see?
Oh, that's the missing ingredient.
That's the link that you have to understand.
So if you're in Massachusetts and you buy this debt, you're getting tax-exempt, federal and state.
You can't write off the premium loss as a loss. There's an amortization schedule. If it dips below and you sell it, you can. That's not a loss you can realize to get that tax.
But the, the income tax implications are thirty-eight percent tax.
These are fairly sophisticated buyers doing this.
Well, I'll, I'll agree with that until the thing settles.
Well, or some fairly sophisticated sellers.
They're, they're very sophisticated sales force that were given these to sell.
Repackagers. Yeah. Yes.
John knows how that works.
Yeah, the repackagers are the, uh, where the sophistication lies.
Right, these are not, but, but these aren't like pension funds, moneyless debts. This is, this is like.
Absolutely not.
This is.
First Tennessee was the winning buyer, and I know what that sounds like, but they're a very reputable firm from my world in Boston. They will sell these all to retail in, in Massachusetts.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Quite possibly in Redding.
Right.
Al- almost unquestionably.
Yeah. And bear in mind, this is what they paid us. This is not what you'll get when you buy them.
That is correct.
They have to make a profit.
Right, they have a markup, right. Right, so they're putting these bonds in their portfolio essentially, and they're selling them.
Yep. And many of them would've taken orders in advance, so for a deal aside, they have to, but usually, a big deal will all be pre-sold. So they don't wanna take any risk.
We have a pretty serious motion going on here, don't we?
Well.
Do we suspend the reading at some point?
Yeah.
I would think at some point you could.
Alright, so I'm just gonna read, read the motion and someone make a motion to suspend it. Uh, move that in order to reduce interest cost, the treasurer's authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to chapter forty-four, section twenty-one A, the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all or a portion of the town's nine million five hundred and thirty-five thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand seven bonds dated November one, two thousand seven, maturing on or after November first, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Emziger moves that we suspend the reading.
Collectively.
I do.
Second.
Okay, and we do the, and the discussion is in the interest of the fact that this is very readable.
Yes.
Um, and it's very straightforward, um, and I think we've had some general discussion about this and, you know, I'm comfortable suspending the, you know, the rather extended reading in favor of.
Furthermore.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Now, do we have a second to the motion?
Oh, well, we just, you just voted on suspending.
Yeah, suspending, yeah.
Right. Oh, okay.
Now, do we have a second to the motion? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? And on we go to approve the debt sale. Done. Okay, now, we've got seventeen goals update and a draft on the eighteen goals.
Yeah, I'll only do the first part since I don't have the second part.
Okay.
This is the sixteen goals. I don't know what I put into your outline. I updated the board, I think it was in March, so I've highlighted things that have changed and, and, you know, maybe half or actually less, a third of them have changed. Um, one of the things that, um, I've learned in the last, um, couple of weeks is the state is formally, uh, undertaking a review of human elder services in the Commonwealth. A big one. It's gonna take two years. So there's some discussion. Jean visited the council on aging a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know, I don't think she knew that then, I'm not sure. Um, she discussed with the council whether they had funds available to help out with a local, uh, survey of some sort of, uh, you know, what's a master plan for human and elder services. I don't know, they, she met with lukewarm interest, I guess I'll say. And since then, we learned that the state is gonna do it for free, but it's gonna take a long time, so it's not gonna have any answer in the next year or two. So there's some discussion now, it's a staff level, of which is better. And I will tell you that the state one is not gonna give us all the things we want, but it is gonna give us peer community data that's competent. So that's pretty valuable. It'd be awfully nice to have the results of it now. Here's all the services Redding offers, here's what the peers offer, see the difference. That's one of the things we know anecdotally, but we can't quantify. The state will do that.
Do you know if it'll be thorough enough to give you relevant data?
No, I, I would say I don't know and, and generally, I would, I'd be a little low on the trust element for the state, but this is an area that's so important, I'd kinda hope they dig in, uh, and we can talk to our legislators. I don't even know what agency, I don't think it's MAPC that's gonna do it. So I, I just throw that out there as, you know, we may, after more discussion and more understanding, abandon this as a local goal and just say, why, why do it if it's, it's gonna take us six months to get an answer. But on the other hand, you know, there's nothing better than local flavor and local input, so.
I, my opinion is that we're gonna take, we're gonna spend two years getting that. If you get it from the state in two years, it'll be a miracle.
Probably, yeah.
I mean, they're forecasting a three hundred and fifty million dollar shortfall in their, in their own budget?
Yeah.
I mean, is this something that's gonna?
The beauty is the legislators are all heading for the human elder services needs category, so maybe they'll see that.
Well, there is that. I know the feeling.
I don't know. You know, it's gonna be another choice and, you know, we'll have to make the choice at some point in the next, say, three months. We don't wanna go out and do something someone else is gonna do for us, if, if it's real and if it's timed. We'll find out more. I, I wanna ask DPW especially to come in, although I know your agenda's gonna be busy for a while, to give you a demonstration on the C-click fix and how it's been applicable. I can tell you, I've used it secretly, I thought. Um, it's really good. I, I put in a comment under my screen at six o'clock one night, and I used her father's address for a branch down. At eight-thirty the next morning, DPW was out there fixing it. And later in the day, they sent an electronic answer, and they didn't know it was me, although when they got there, they might've figured it out. But they didn't know when they sent the crew out there. I was really impressed.
I think it had a couple of glitches early, but I, you know, like the follow-up was, you know.
It did. Exactly. Yeah, there wasn't a lot of good follow-through.
Right.
And, uh, you know, as is typical in these, you know, DPW is fixing problems, not doing computer work. But if they didn't close the issue, it looked like they weren't doing any work.
Right. Right.
They eventually kinda said, okay, this is kinda not our job typically, but if you're gonna penalize it, we'll do it.
I got, I got, um, a message that there was some, that a neighbor had.
Did you get one also? Cause I got one of those.
That, it was basically, you, you.
That's, cause you, you've used the system before, then. That's why.
It was, I've used it, but like, because there was something near me, they said, a neighbor of yours on, and I forget, it just said, has made a.
Okay, you might be interested. I brought that.
Yeah, I thought, oh, that's great, but I didn't.
I brought that to, uh, Jane Cinsella about a week or two ago. I said, has anyone talked about this? We just got this and I'm not sure we want it. How do we opt out? She said, I've never heard of this. You're the first one to come to me, so now you're the second one.
Yeah.
Now we know it wasn't approved.
I'll be the third then.
Okay.
You got one too.
So she was gonna ask them, um, is there a local way to opt out of this? As a town, can we just turn that off or can we have the individuals turn it off? Because, you know, just 'cause you reported a pothole doesn't mean you're gonna care about a pothole five houses down from you. So, you know, that's interesting that you say that. I'll follow up with it.
Yeah.
This isn't reverse nine-one-one, this is C-click fix.
No. Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Bob, that metric of closing and cycling and time to complete and number of, that's all part of the, uh, goal number six as well, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Yeah, this, you know, as, as is often the case, there's pretty good data measures and, and reporting tools, but the data itself is not always great. So we have, um, you know, the permit system that the building inspectors use, and we can anecdotally tell you what the turnaround time is, but there are some permits that have been in there for years and have never been closed out in, and so from a data standpoint, it looks like, wow, your average response time is not so good.
Well, you throw the out wires out, use them.
But you can't. That's the trouble with these software programs is they make them tamper proof.
Yeah, right.
Which I understand, they don't want you monkeying around with the answers, but you can't throw out bad data. So it's kind of a real challenge. Uh, let's see. Board and committee communication, um, I would indicate that's half-done because at the staff level, we have finished all our work. And by that, I mean making part-time jobs full-time and making John Feuto in charge of a lot, a lot of different boards that never used to talk to each other, and now they do. The general level of awareness among all our human elder services board is much better now. Health knows what's going on in council and aging and so forth, and as, as John Halsey will recall, uh, the Board of Health hired a consultant to do a study and some of the recommendations they made, we already had, they just didn't know that.
Right.
So that was kind of an eye-opener. So at the staff level, we've done all we need to do. The question now for you is, is there some kind of, you know, coming together of a variety of boards that we need to do? And that's something we should talk about.
Hmm.
I would not say it's gonna be as helpful to have all the boards in. You gotta have reasons why you have groups of boards.
Oop, right, right.
So you should think about that.
And whether or not, I mean.
CPDC has had good meetings with you, you know, the board assessors will come in again. You've had some good meetings, but,
Yes.
you know, I'm telling you, if you could do that much more often, you'd get such a bang for the buck. And neither board would feel like they're left out in some way. Uh, I do know some of your appointed boards in, historically, especially five years ago, felt no part of the Board of Selecting the Stock process. Once they were appointed, you know, liaisons wouldn't show up, there was not a lot of feedback coming back from staff. It was just the annual appointment process. I think that feeling has changed now, at least among some, such as CPDC.
Is there, is there anybody we haven't heard from in the last year?
No. I've made sure to bring them in.
Oh.
There's two parts to that, wasn't it?
Um, actually, let me think about that. There might be, trust fund commissioners haven't seen you.
CBA. CBA.
No, but they're coming.
Well, you're going to ZBA, so I figured that was good enough, but.
And actually, I'm going to their meeting.
I think they're coming in July.
Yeah, and I'm going to their meeting tomorrow for the first time to kinda get the lay of the land.
Okay.
Goal line, does that also have to do with per, uh, streamlining permitting so that the, the boards, you know, cons come and CPDC act, acting concert on applications?
I hadn't thought of that, but it could be. Well, you know, that's part of the discussion that I've asked tonight was kinda streamlining the applicant's experience.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was really happy to hear conservation has made what I would consider a significant improvement in their thinking in terms of
Yep.
not almost mandatorily having a someone come in for two meetings minimum.
For instance, having an order of conditions pre-drafted.
So the staff will be able to write up a decision in advance.
That is exceptionally good news.
Yeah. That's been a while. That's how planning has worked for many, many years. And obviously, there's times when you make your best effort as staff, and that's not what gets discussed that night and agreed to, and you go back and you fix it and you have someone back.
And it isn't about giving the store away either. It, it's about trying to facilitate progress.
Right. Yeah, it, it must've been very frustrating for an applicant to have been through one or two meetings, to be fully on board and agreement and to hear, you know, we love what you're doing, it's exactly right, come back again and we'll hand you the final decision that we've just agreed to.
Happened with so, happened so often.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, to say that time is money is an understatement in that situation.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Um, in some cases, it costs thousands as a result of that. Um, and so I'm glad that that's a step forward.
Yeah.
You know, on this, um, we have talked about the idea of maybe not bringing whole committees or not bringing multiple committees, but possibly bringing chairs and vice-chairs together, um, in a, in a workshop setting? I mean, is there any appetite for that? I, I personally think that would be valuable.
I think that's the way to go because you're gonna get quorum issues.
You're also gonna get cross-pollination and.
I think you should actually invite them into your CPDC meeting this summer. That's what you just heard from the community from the last six weeks, is look, you guys gotta do better at this. And not every board deals with that, but many of them do peripherally. You know, the council on aging needs to understand there's efforts being made for economic development, cause it's gonna have some implication on some of their population.
I think that there's very few that aren't touched by it.
I agree.
You know, even, like, Board of Health, it connects to this.
Sure.
Uh, because they're involved in businesses and so forth. That may be a good idea.
And if you're discussing it sort of at the conceptual level, that's when you wanna hear their feedback and they stop you from going down the wrong path on something.
Yeah.
So, that's a possibility.
How do the, the rest of you feel about that? As a, as a, maybe a first step towards starting to assemble a cabinet of chairs and vice-chairs?
Hmm. I think it makes the most sense.
Yeah. I just, I just think our bandwidth is so limited at this point.
It's tough.
I mean, maybe it's.
Yeah, well, best efforts, you know.
Maybe it's, maybe it's something in the winter.
Well, if we pick, all I'm saying is, this, this idea that Bob brought up, you piggyback them in and, not with its own agenda,
Right.
but invite them because it's, it's pertinent and it's a message they can bring back.
Right.
And then maybe that's a first step towards, uh, something in the winter. I agree with you very, I think that we're not gonna get anything done till, till the late fall at the earliest or the early winter, so.
Yeah, at the earliest.
Okay, sorry to derail you.
No, not at all. Um, we've decided to keep our current nine-one-one system for another year. We are looking at other vendors, but there wasn't any compelling reason to change. Um, let's see, economic development, uh, the hazard, I should've asked. I, I didn't ask Jean or Julie lately. The Hazard Mitigation Plan, we've hired, um, MAPC. I think they're almost done. Uh, that's required to be done by June thirtieth, so we'll eventually pretend we had done it. Uh, one issue that's, one of the few that's zero, and that's by consensus of staff at least, was, you know, maybe it's a bandwidth issue, but we don't have time for an ad hoc master planning committee right now. And in fact, we've done virtually all the pieces, other than the piece that sits on top that joins all the different plans that exist.
Once we get all the zoning done, then, that, once we get all the zoning done?
Should be easy.
Yeah.
Then we can have the ad hoc.
We're not ready for that yet.
And by that time, hopefully, we have a planner.
And some people would've started with that. We didn't happen to, who knows why. Uh, that would've slowed you down two or three years anyways.
I think in general, this board has the end in mind already.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we, we know where we're pointed. Um, we don't need that first step in order to get, we, we need to be marching towards it.
Well, we could've done it. I mean, we could've done it.
Yeah. You've done it indirectly or in form.
You know.
Like, have, reaching out on those economic development meetings when so many people came, like, over at the light department, that's effectively a master planning type meeting.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, let's see. Parking in the downtown, you know, that's, that came up tonight. That's, you know, in CPDC's lap and in, in, uh, PTTF's lap. Um, you know, we still, still have very mixed li- feelings on that at a staff level. Statistically, we have enough parking. It's not where people want it.
Practically speaking, that's not true.
Minimal amount of walking.
Yeah.
Jean has got a meeting set up with the MBTA next week. I may or may not join her, others may or may not join her. They are quite aware that we've got a parking lot off them for free, and they're maybe not so interested in that anymore. Uh, but she's brought some other ideas to them that we had discussed that they hadn't thought about. That's just lots of their land is vacant and they just never use. So if you think of the land that leads into the Dennis properties.
Yeah.
That's all they're parking.
That's true.
No one's gonna park there to walk to the train station, or maybe they could, you know, maybe Dennis would want it for a small bit of money. Maybe we'll come back to you with recommendations of employee parking from downtown. Why not just put them there? Let them walk.
Parking, with their walkways proposed there to tie the economic areas together.
Yeah, right. So, you know, the MBTA is somewhat of a struggling partner to be brought in, but maybe now that they're in financial difficulty, they'll be paying a little more attention. I don't know, we'll see.
You're talking about where you drive past Rite Aid?
Yes, on the right-hand side. There's some kind of a pickup truck or boxcar truck that parked there for years.
Is parking there?
Yep. You know, if you had some kind of a parking arrangement with a shuttle for employees, uh, which would be a very inexpensive thing to do
Right.
in a rela-, in the big picture of things.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if that light department parcel ever gets developed, then there could be a, a, you can have a shuttle that just keeps going back and forth.
Yeah, just runs around.
And just takes people there to, you know, especially if there's, if there are, um, businesses in there.
They walk.
I, I have to tell you, I mean.
Shuttle it down there, they take you to the restaurants and they shuttle you back.
So every summer, I end up in Cooperstown. And, you know, in the summer, you can't, I mean, there's nowhere to park.
Yeah.
Um, now, so they've got a whole shuttling system for tourists, but they have a separate one in a separate place for all the people at work, you know, for, you know, in, in, you know, in the, in the Cooperstown area. And I think that there is, you started to talk about those parcels. You know, free markets will drive solutions to this.
If you let it.
If you let it. I mean, it will, it will drive solutions to this parking. I, I, I'm convinced of that. It doesn't mean we don't participate,[1722.44] If you let it. I mean, it will, it will drive solutions to this parking. I, I, I'm convinced of that. It doesn't mean we don't participate, but as some of those say, we do our role, you know, you, you know, you tee it up, um, and then nature starts to take its course after.
Yeah.
And a lot of those businesses will pay for sub- to subsidize those shuttles. They'll take people back to the train station. They'll, they'll do all that.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of models out there. The board really gets a lot of its policy decisions. You know, does the board want the police department to be really cracking down on all the merchant parking, on the employee parking? Cause they could do a better job of that if they had more staffing hours. It's just a better money.
Right.
Um, and then you're gonna have businesses in here every meeting complaining that they can't retain employees and they can't park. So.
Yeah.
There's lots of issues. There's lots of sides to the equation.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, we've talked a lot of crazy ideas at the staff level. There's some person on staff that wants to evacuate the train station parking and have it be for businesses only and move all the commuters offsite. So I said, well, I think that's a bit radical.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll just make the, uh,
That is fairly radical.
The twenty-five dollar space will be far away and the five hundred dollar space might be in front, but, you know, maybe we do that. We'll see.
Now you, now you're talking.
Um, recreation, you know, the lighting project is obviously on hold now. Um, the library project, I, I had a meeting today around four with the owner of the construction company. It is going very slowly. Uh, we'll eventually, you know, drag all ourselves just over the finish line as best we can, but, um, you know, we, we don't wanna be here in ten years talking about litigation. So we're all keenly aware of that. We have an excellent project manager.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've had generally good partners that have had some unforeseen issues, having nothing to do with the town in terms of their own staffing. And they've said, you know, today a comment was made, I wish I had done this twelve weeks ago, not six weeks ago.
No.
As from the owner of a company. He said, now I see something I didn't see before. And, you know, so we appreciate the honesty and that's, we're being a pretty good partner to work with. We could be screaming and having a lawyer in there and we're not doing any of that yet, but it's not been an easy project at all and.
There's hardly anybody working there.
Uh, on average, there's about thirty-five to forty now. Uh, they're all inside, so you just wouldn't see them.
Yeah, well, that's good.
Uh, but yeah, they, they're supposed to be billing at a million to a million to a month as of February. The highest one we've seen is about seven hundred grand. So they're just not staffing the project.
That's cause they got other stuff going on?
Yeah, but it's complicated because there's a lot of subcontractors. You can't always just, you know, they're supplementing their own workforce for some of the subcontractors. Um, it's complicated. It's not a business idea to be.
Is there a guest, I mean, I, I mean, is it, is it still?
We're still shooting for opening in September.
It's still fall?
Really?
So, you know, it's painful, but.
That, I mean, that's literally right around the corner.
Oh, yeah.
That, that, that's a good visibility thing prior to the October date, you know.
Yeah, well, good or bad, I don't know.
No, good.
Well, I mean, it'd be good to get it done.
There's, you know, the library has tentatively picked a date. I don't remember. It's in October to have a grand opening.
Hmm.
And, you know, they're gonna have it, no matter what shape the building's in. Uh, as, you know, the building is about a million and a half dollars away from being completed. So that's two months' work, maybe three.
But the tech, yeah, but the, but the technology isn't been delivered yet, the furniture is, right.
It's all stra- you know, strategically lined up. It's like, you know, we're better than the Japanese at just in time. You know, they've got spreadsheets like crazy, you know, delivery this day.
Hmm. Yeah.
Lots of, Bob, uh, has built in a tremendous amount of flexibility with all his vendors when he can. They're storing stuff for free. They're willing to work with him because he's being good to them. So you, you gotta be infinitely flexible. And the only thing I regret is that, uh, early on in the project, you know, some of the folks involved in the building committee just ran us around on some issues that just weren't that important. And, and wasted a couple of months here and there. And, you know, I guarantee you, if the permanent building committee were running this project, that would not have happened.
Would be a totally different project. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Maybe a totally different building.
Probably.
A totally different site.
Um, I did have a chat with.
Speaking of Oakland Road.
Yeah, I did have a chat with town council on Oakland Road and I don't even understand what he said, other than it's, it's possible that prior council and prior engineering work might have to be fully revisited.
Oh, my god.
So he says, what kind of appetite do you have to spend time and money on this? I said, give me an idea of what you really think it's gonna cost or time-wise to fix this and when can we do it? So I had been aiming for a November town meeting as he had been, and they have not billed us a lot yet, uh, though, although their bills are running a month and a half late. He has uncovered some issues with the paper streets that he doesn't think the town is adequately taken care of. And remember, this is former town council that guided us and, you know, former, former town engineer.
We have recourse there. I think we need to examine that.
You know, we've, we've had the discussion, uh, with other projects in town, so it's not an easy one.
Well, the seventy-five percent is just getting the, uh, effectively the titles, like, you know, this, right?
Right.
Now we got an RFP after that, et cetera, et cetera.
Do, do, so do we even own the land then? Is that what, is that?
Well.
Hold on, just hold on. So how, how does that get to be seventy-five percent? Cause we have all those other steps.
Um. That, the, the seventy-five percent was before the conversation yesterday. And that's what went out to you last week.
Oh, but.
It's like Candy Land where you have those things to ladder.
But that does include RFP decide what we want there. That.
No, the seventy-five percent, I thought the legal work was effectively done. I was getting this information through the engineers.
Hmm.
And they, they had one thing left to do and town council had two things left to do. And I said, all right, that's pretty good. Then we just gotta decide what to do with it.
We can't use something eminent domain to clear all that up?
I, I, you know, at some point, I might like want more of you to have a chat with Ray and me, uh, cause I don't wanna pretend to understand all his issues.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I'd really like to be, I mean, we need to talk about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we, going into the fall, we're gonna hear about this.
And, and he's not saying, he's not saying you have a problem. He's saying, I've uncovered enough that I'm not comfortable yet. I gotta do a lot more to be comfortable. I said, okay, that's, that's the question.
Yeah.
Not much to watch.
That's one of the two biggest parcels left and we're gonna wanna position that.
Right. My own answer personally would be not so much in June, cause we have other budget issues. Do it. Whatever it costs, do it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Cause at some point, we're gonna either use this land or get rid of this land. We gotta understand what it is. And I thought we had passed that hurdle three years ago.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's it, we need clean title.
And all the action at town meeting. We went back to town meeting twice.
I think Peter was here when we started this discussion.
Oh, yeah? Oh, easily.
Yeah, yeah. We need, we need clean title about that.
Oh, but, you know, the school committee met and they, you know, had an article to give it to the selectmen or whatever and, you know, we really thought it was all lined up. And maybe Ray will find out after more research it is, but from other projects he's worked on, my guess is something does not exactly.
I will tell you how far back this goes. I mean.
Five, six years?
Oh, I, I will tell you this. I was, while I was busy with the foundation over at Birch Meadow for the baseball field,
Bill Brown took it further.
engaged Peter in a discussion about turfing it with the proceeds of the sale of Oakland Road, ten years ago.
Okay.
I mean, so this has been going on forever.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, Bill Brown will be telling you it's gone on since nineteen thirty-one.
Well, he tells you for sure the lights were due, you know, back in nineteen thirty-five, right after they lit Comiskey Park, so.
That's just, that's just a shame.
It's been a struggle, guys.
Um, for selectmen's policies, uh, Matt, Gene and I have looked at most of your policies.
Yes, you're right.
And I've actually asked Paula to look at all your licensing policies, since she's the one that generally is working with the public. Um, and she's gonna come back. The first thing we're gonna get, bring back to you probably in August, maybe September. Um, vetted through town council is a, is a full set of licensing policies, including liquor. Rather than just doing liquor, you heard from Ray, you need to do that.
Yeah.
Do the whole thing. Um, make sure the whole set, that's probably the most important policy you have, I think, cause it affects people's livelihood.
Hmm.
Um, the rest, you know, sometimes you use them, sometimes we don't even remember there's a policy. Um, I'll have some discussions with you individually.
Well, the fact that they've been untouched for so long says we should take, we should dust them off.
Yeah. I told you I'd like to delete them all, but you were a little nervous about that, so we'll take a more measured approach.
You mean, make it up as we go along?
Well, I didn't say make it up.
Oh, boy.
That's exactly what you.
I knew this thing was running off the rails from early tonight.
All right.
As you get gassed up, it gets easier. Um, goal twenty-six, I thought was done, but we'll see, you know, what kinda help the schools need, if any. Um, I thought our HR function was working pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've actually been in touch with, sorry, go ahead. Uh, the two folks that'll do, uh, the union contracts, one of them's labor council, one of them is our former HR person. Um, we decided she did some work for the schools and then we've run into some, some TLT, uh, budget issues. So I asked her to wait till July. I think we'll pick that up in the fis- new fiscal year, with the objective of being done by, uh, November, December. The point is that labor council has never looked at our collective bargaining contracts in the history of Redding. It's probably not the best idea.
Okay.
He's given us individual advice, but he's never looked at a contract in full and said, oh, look at that, it's not legal. Or it is, or, or what's the best practice?
Well, and we've learned in, since we've hired Ray.
Yeah. Right.
The folly of that approach.
And we've had good labor council, the same one since I've been here, so I'm not as worried about that. But I'm worried that it was only us asking questions of a piece and the piece is, oh yeah, this is good. He never saw the whole thing.
So don't we have that reviewed before we sign it?
Not by a lawyer. That's the point.
How's that? That's a pretty interesting.
No, we're very frugal. And, and to the, to the credit of the unions, most of the unions do not use a lawyer.
Does the unions?
Or they u- they may run it by, you know, some lawyer, but they don't sit in on the bargaining. Schools, there's lawyers on both sides all the time. So, you know, it's, it's a more collaborative approach, but Carol Roberts is the perfect person to do it, cause she sat in for years and knows the intention and the he- and the history of a lot of the language. So, I, I don't expect anything to come of it that's a problem, but it would be awfully nice to just feel like, um, you know, labor council's vetted it and maybe reorganized. I reorganized one of the contracts, one weekend once, the fire one. It just made no sense to me with the logic that it was and I just got mad one weekend, so I just redid the whole thing and I thought they were just gonna throw it out, but they liked it. So, we'll fix that.
Bob, before you jump away from that, um, selectmen's policy, I, I just wanna kinda say out loud, cause I'm, cause it's on my mind, is that, I think, I don't know if there's, I'm suspecting there is no such policy for what I'm gonna talk about, but I think we should consider it. And maybe in the absence of the policy, just kind of maybe agree together to think about this. And that is, more and more often, we're hearing from various advisory committees who have an interest in producing their own flyer, their own printed material. And, you know, we work as liaisons and, and, you know, we all have a handful of these. And I think in general, we have allowed each other to just kinda guide and counsel them. And I think we could end up with a lot of inconsistency, especially as more of this surfaces. I think all of that ought to find its way right through Bob and or Matt, rather than through us. I, I don't know. How do you guys feel about that?
It's gonna be a lot more consistency if it runs through the, the town side, the daytime government.
Yeah, that's our motto, more daytime government involvement, less nighttime to the people.
That's for sure.
Well, I just think from a consistency standpoint, I mean, it's not that we would act nefariously or, you know, in, in a rogue way, but I, I just think it's really important when the town is speaking through one of the advisory committees, that it, that it, that we have a certain quality control to.
Or even to say it more differently, that the town will speak through advisory committees when the town elects to speak through advisory committees.
Exactly.
And, and not before.
And if you have the same, I mean, we've got an ombuds, an ombudsman for a reason.
That makes sense.
Um, and that person also, you know, fortunately for us, happens to be a licensed attorney. Um, I, I mean, that, we, we should be using that, is what I'm saying. So I don't think we have a policy for this, guys.
I was just looking. No, you don't, but unless it's tucked into this.
And I would just suggest that until such time as we revisit all the policies.
It's between the lines, but it's not explicit.
Um, I, I think we should, unless somebody has an opposition to it, um.
Well, that's gonna be even more important with more, um, associate members who have their own view of what a group might do or come in and out based on whether there's a, a permanent member present.
Just, just to put the line to. It's also much easier to communicate with the public with social media now than it was twenty year, twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, right. Do much more havoc than you used to be able to do.
Yeah.
And that doesn't mean you can't say or speak. What it means is, when you're speaking as, you know, as, uh, uh, as an advisory committee to the selectmen, I, I think there should be some management to the quality control of how it's, how it's dispensed.
If you're, yeah. If you're speaking with the imprimatur of the town, it's gotta come through the town before you speak.
Uh, that's what I think.
Well, and, and some of you are keenly aware that, that, you know, free speech is not free when you're a volunteer. It just isn't. Most volunteers.
Right. Yeah.
So, yeah, no, it's not addressed. I just checked. Certainly could do that.
So that'd be a one I'd like to draft.
Yeah, so add that to the list.
I, I think that needs to be on the list.
Right.
And, you know.
It makes sense.
And even if it's not on the list now, from a pr- a straight practical point of view, it'd say expectations.
I, I intend to bring back to us when we're, when it's not this hour and we're not fully packed, that we consider that as a, something we can, kind of agree among ourselves. So I think we can move on. I, I don't mean to distract us too much.
You say fully gassed?
I did not.
Okay.
I'm unclear if gassed is a good thing or a bad thing.
I'll have to get the polter.
Are they still open?
I think so. There's other places down there that already have a license.
True, true.
Um, we're all done with technology. We're, you know, we've made all the decisions we need to make. Um, public meetings are done for now, although I think there's gonna be another, a couple of them suggested to you, uh, probably in August. Um, you know, September first is the next public meeting to discuss finances. That's too, that's too much of a gap. Uh, you know, we heard some things, at each meeting, we heard some things and tried to adapt. In the third one, we heard some more things and, you know, we need to sit down as staff and then maybe involve one or two of you and try to decide what's the next public meeting. And I'll give you an example. I don't know if it's really worth it, but both John and I heard from at least some people, you need to show me all the things you've done over the last, you tell me how long, three years to make this necessary. You know, anyone involved in the budget process at town meeting is probably bored to death of that, but I, it's, it's a fair comment. A lot of people have not been involved in that.
Yep.
And I have to tell you, of any of the issues I've ever been involved with over the last twenty years in Redding, more people that I don't know have come up to me and talked to me about this in the last month and a half. Saying, you know, first of all, they, they enjoyed the presentation. They had no idea most of the facts. And now they have some kind of basis to, um, understand things.
It's good.
And most of them were re- are referred by a friend who went to the force, weren't heard about it, or a volunteer who was already involved in local government. So it is important to try to reach out.
Mm-hmm.
And there was applause at the end of at least two of them.
Oh, really? They were, they were glad it was done.
Yeah, there was.
And I think the, you know, a lot of feedback I've gotten from every guy that's, um, you know, pe- people wanna know if, if we were gonna propose one, what's the number?
Glad it was done.
Any echoes?
Right.
You know, I think that's the biggest thing. What does, what does it look like in my wallet?
Right.
I say we're ninety percent done, cause I think that's the last ten percent is how much and what does it do?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, and I think you have to have. Yeah, what, what are we spending on?
I think it's important probably to have that discussion prior to us needing to take a vote on.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So is that, is that, I mean, do we have that on our agendas?
Uh, you have in July and I still don't know which meeting the Board of Assessors wanna talk to you about, that's senior tax relief, I'll just say.
Right.
Okay, oh, right, I think.
I think we need to spend the summer with a piece of this as part of every agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we gotta be ready and we have to be simple. You know, when the, when it's time to come up with, if, if a wanted decision is made for an override, there's gotta be a certain simplis- simplicity to people being able to understand what we're trying to do. Okay, so.
Good show.
That's, that's, that's it on the goals. Next, um, one or two meetings, I'm not sure. Uh, we're almost through our personnel evaluations for the year. And that's where we start discussing future year goals. And I will tell you, the list has never been shorter than it is right now. It's like survive.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
Well, it's cause they stopped asking.
Well, I will, I will observe that at the staff level, I've never seen really dedicated people more exhausted. And, you know, that's not a good thing. And I don't mean to complain, it's just I'm stating a fact.
Yeah.
And it's, it's troubling. And I, I don't know why, because I don't think the workload today is much different than six months ago. It's just a cumulative effect of a long period of time.
Yeah. It's just, that, that's what I was gonna say, it's extended. It's not, it's, it hasn't been in quick bursts. It's been elevating.
And every fiscal, right, every fiscal year, you know, it's a little heightened, you know, you gotta make sure everything's perfect, cause after the end of the year, you can't change it. And, um, you know, myself and others have found more simple, small mistakes that have been made in the last year that you have to catch up to. It's not a big deal than I've ever seen.
Hmm. It's a cumulative effect.
And to me, that's a telling thing. It's like, you know, people around here used to be perfect. They're not anymore. They're well above average. But they're just making this much mistakes, cause they don't have the time to check their work. It's all a bandwidth problem.
The bandwidth is being stretched enormously. And you, it's, it's clear.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, people who are alwa- who have been for years extremely helpful, continue to be helpful, but don't have quite as much space to fit it all in.
They're just. Yeah.
Um, so are you done with the goals, Bob?
I am, thank you.
So I have one last item, uh, before we close, um, and you'll see it on your agenda. And it has to do with the fact that in all the activity of listening sessions and everything that's been going on among us over the course of the last, let me say, the last six weeks, we find ourselves soon to have no contracted town manager, um, a few days from now. And we're gonna keep him on a very short leash, so.
Was he not telling us that on purpose, maybe?
I think so. I, I said, Bob, isn't it a contract time? He went, oh, well, that silly thing.
Hoping you wouldn't know.
And, you know, and then he, you're not running and hiding. So, um, I asked Ray if he would, um, prepare something.
Yep.
Um, which he has done, um, which, um, Bob has had a chance to look at and I have too. And it's more just a courtesy extension of thirty days.
When is the contract expire? June, June thirty?
June thirty.
June thirtieth, eleven fifty-nine PM.
Oh, eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine.
Yeah, but who's counting? Of course. So, um, what I've asked Ray to do is put together something that's suited, I mean, really, it's just an extension of what's going on for thirty days. Gives us the time to finalize, um, cause you'll remember, some of the things that are changing for Bob's contract have to do with his full-time status.
Correct.
Uh, yeah, you know, I mean, his thirty-seven and a half hours goes to forty hours, which is about half of the amount of hours that he spends.
Yeah, right.
Working on behalf of all of us. Um, and anybody that knows him knows that to be true. So I, I, this is more of a, an alert to you that, um, we needed to extend the contract and, um.
So it looks like it's just thirty days?
Yes. Yeah, it's a thirty day.
Yeah.
Is that enough time?
It is. Uh, Bob and I will, you know, get it together and then get it back to you. Um.
Yeah.
That will do.
John did mention a series of thirty-one day contracts. My turn to the best way to keep control of me.
Yeah.
It's like the, the Cromnibus.
Well. Well, no, it's like, it's like the famous, the famous manager of the, of Los, of the Brooklyn Dodgers and then Walter Austin.
Walter Austin. Twenty-seven, one-year contracts.
Twenty-seven, one-year contract.
Yeah.
They offered him more.
Prove your worth.
Would never take them. And, you know.
Till one day they didn't.
Right.
Bye.
It was a new owner, I think, that caused that to happen. So, that's a heads up for you.
Right.
Um, that, that's there and it's just really a extension of thirty days.
So there's a motion?
Yeah.
There is.
Move to approve the amendment of the May twenty-first, two thousand thirteen employment agreement between town of Redding and Robert Lasher for services as town manager as presented.
Yes.
Second.
Um, discussion?
I just wanna bring up one thing that I think it's important that you have a new town council that looks at the agreement. You know, this was another town council that did it.
Yeah.
So, I sent him an email and made him.
Sure. Oh, that's a good point.
Aware and that he should direct his comments to John and to Sharon. Not to me.
Which he did.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, which is the right protocol. I mean, I, you know, this is yet one more thing. There's a lot of little cleanups, you know, a lot of little, you know, um, things that need to be.
Oh, yeah.
It's a legacy problem, yeah. Were there material findings, John, or were they just stuff around the corner?
I, they're not material, but there was some cleanup he had to do on it. Um, I, you know, I could put them side by side, but, and Bob, um, I think you probably would notice it when you look at it, but, um.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, we, I think I would've heard, um, I noticed it got to the agenda, so I'm assuming that, um, that it was, it was fine, but, um, just little things like the protocol of who should be getting it.
Yeah. So would you characterize most of the changes, housekeeping then?
Yes.
And legal?
I, i- in, in keeping with what Ray has been doing for us now for at least a couple of years, or maybe longer now.
Yeah.
Every time he gets a look at something.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a little.
It costs us money.
Um, he's actually pretty good about that, too.
I was just gonna say, the other day I sent something, a contract. It was a formal letter we're sending to the contractor for the library project. To their contract expert, and I expected to get a lot of Redding cross-ups. She calls me back and she says, asked me two questions. She said, is that what you meant to accomplish? She said, yes. She said, exactly as it is, it's fine.
That's right.
Said, really?
Yeah.
She said, no, I, I, there's no reason. There's no reason for me to micro-manage this. You've made all your points. So they're pretty good, actually. And that, what that tells me is when they're correcting things, they need correcting.
If, if I was hiring a personal law firm, I would be, I would be inclined to hire them.
Yeah.
For all the reasons we're talking about here.
We're so lucky we picked these guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a good choice.
I picked us too. That was nice.
Yeah, I just wanna say it's been, uh, three years and, uh, it's hard to believe because in one, it's a blink of an eye in one form or another. And on the other hand, it's a lot that's gotten done. It feels like ten years.
In a good way.
Time flies when you're having a good time, right?
Exactly.
No, you have ten year.
Yeah, right. That's true. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Ready for the vote? And, uh, yes, I'm ready for the vote. All those in favor?
Okay.
And I am perfectly happy deferring the minutes because I had some comments which I didn't get done, so.
Okay, then we'll defer the minutes.
For the minutes, all right.
Whether the board is selecting, if you're in the meeting, that, and ten, thirty-seven?
Thirty-five. Ten thirty-four?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you wanna go yuck and read the back of this?
Yeah.
I was, I, I saw you chuckling and I did.
Oh, yes, I included an anonymous letter I got.
So we're getting called out for, uh, not.
This was not signed, this is not the person's name.
Well, no, why would you sign that?
So, Bob, I gotta ask you a question.
The board members are not worth the salary.
Not for nothing. You get a brand-new clock and it's wrong, just like the other one? I'm, what's that all about?
It is.
You gotta get the facilities director.
Well, that came, this came in today. Yesterday.
It's awesome.
I noticed that a couple of days ago. I have no idea when it changed.
Oh, well.
Have you seen that?
Aye, oh.
This is incredible, this letter.
Oh, it's great.
You know, when people don't put their name, you know.
Oh, it's telling.
Yeah, I would, I, I have to admit, I would respect it a lot more if I knew who it was.
This is great. Right.
And I could have a conversation with him if they.
No, 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 no. That's a one-way conversation.
Well.
That's, that's, that's an argument that's not open for debate.
Yeah.
Of that person.
Yeah, well, you never know. You're probably right.
It's probably Tom Ryan.
No, he would've signed it when it come in.
No, it's definitely somebody.
Time would suck.
Spelling would've been better.
It's definitely on Summer Street.